All set, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, this is May 28th at 6:30. I'm going to call this Planning Commission meeting to order. And before we begin, I have some remarks for people that are listening or participating at home. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, city halls closed the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that's being livestreamed online or on ETB Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be assessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and then navigating to the local committees page. Once there, you'll see a link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of just attending tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call call-in information was provided on the posted agenda and there's a link on the Planning Commission Agenda page as well. And so that said, I want to go ahead and open up the public comment for any items that are not on the agenda this evening. If anybody wishes to make comments related to items that are not on the agenda, three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature. Do we have any public comment at this point?
Chair, if I could interrupt, should you take role first? Do we need to do that?
Yes, we do. And I am juggling a couple of screens here at this point, for the reminder. So at this point, I want to open up for roll call. Charlie, are you there? All right.
Michelle has just muted. Charlie?
Charlie is not muted on my end.
Okay, Andrea, is that you speaking?
Yes, it is.
Are you able to...? Yes, please.
Would you like me to take role?
Yeah.
Okay. Hold on, my computer just broke. Okay, there we go. Let's see here, Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Sahani has an accused accent. Commissioner Mendez. I'm here. Commissioner Keller.
Is here.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
And Chair Guerrero.
Here.
And we have a call.
Great, thank you, Andrea. So that said, at this point, we can open it up for public comment for any items that are not on the agenda today.
Oh, hi, Charlie. We do not have any public comments received via the online comment card and we don't have any raised hands in the Zoom call. And I will attempt to unmute Charlie. You should be on now, Charlie.
Hi. Can you hear me now? We can hear you now, Charlie. All right, thank you. All right, so here are requests to make comments. So the public comment portion of this meeting is now closed. You'll still have an opportunity to address and speak on matters that are listed on the agenda when those respective items come up. So if you are listening at home and you'd like to participate on any other agenda items, you still have an opportunity to do that. So at this point, we want to move on to item four on the agenda for approval of action minutes. We have two different steps. So we'll begin with item 4.1, which is the regular meeting for February 27th. And for that meeting, we had four commissioners that were present that will be able to vote on this item with Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Sahani absent from that specific meeting. Were there any changes or questions from the commission on the action minutes from February 27th? All right, seen none? Is anybody interested in moving forward with grouping the minutes here?
Sorry, Chair Guerrero, can I just interrupt real quick? Commissioner Mendez should recuse herself as well to keep her on the commission at that point.
Yes, thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Yeah, it would be... Chair Guerrero. If I may, the four commissioners who were present and who are eligible to vote on these minutes are Commissioner Donaldson, yeah, Commissioner Donaldson, Commissioner Young, Vice Chair Thompson, and Chair Guerrero.
Correct. And all four of us are currently here in the meeting. So this is the first time that we can approve these meetings with everybody in attendance.
Right, so we need a motion and a second.
I move approval.
All right, got moved by Commissioner Donaldson, second by Vice Chair Thompson.
Can we have a... Andrea, do we need to do a roll call?
Yes.
Yes, we can do a roll call.
Okay. All right, let's see, Commissioner Donaldson.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller is recused or abstains. Commissioner Mendez abstains. Commissioner Sahani is not here. Commissioner Young.
Here.
Yay. Vice Chair Thompson.
Yay.
And Chair Guerrero.
Aye.
Four ayes, the minutes of February 27th are approved.
Great, thanks, Charlie. Next, we have the action minute approval. This is item 4.2 for the regular meeting on April 23rd, 2020. For that meeting, everyone's able to vote on this one. And Commissioner Thompson was absent. Unless you watched from home.
Yeah, I did watch from home. But just to note, I just have an editing comment.
So go right ahead, Commissioner Thompson.
Okay, yeah, so there was a typo notice that was repeated when there was no one wishing to speak. So I just correct that before we get into the official record.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Were there any other adjustments or feedback for these action minutes?
Not okay, so...
All right, seen none. Commissioner Keller moved to approve. Do you have a second?
Do have it.
Seconded by Commissioner Donaldson?
Yeah. Have to get the hang of the unmuting here.
That works great.
All right, Commissioner Donaldson?
Yes.
Aye.
No, I was, I'm calling the roll. Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Sahani? Oh, I'm sorry, he's absent. Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
And Chair Guerrero?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent. The minutes are approved for April 23rd. Thank you.
Great. All right, we're going to move on to item number five on the agenda. That's the Community Development Director's Report. Am I taken away, Charlie?
Yeah, I do not have a report for you this evening. I will report on the May city council meetings at your next meeting.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Item number six on the agenda for anybody that has exposure of conflicts of interest or ex parte communications. Seen none? All right. And hearing none, Commissioner Young? Moving on?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We have a study session 7.1. This is the Emeryville Center for the Arts. I don't know about Maru for the presentation.
Good evening, Commissioner. This is Miro Desai, senior planner and the project manager for this item. Sherry, if you could please pull up the staff presentation? Might be helpful if you go into there. All right. Okay, so this is a... This is a second study session for an adaptive reuse of an existing 30,000 square foot building to accommodate an arts and cultural center. The commission first heard this at a study session last year in February. Since that time, the city and the applicant has continued to negotiate towards a lease disposition and development agreement, which will govern the development and operation of the center while the applicant has advanced the project's design and also conducted community outreach. I just want to remind everybody that you would have received a PDF today from Charlie, which outlines the summary of the applicant's outreach. This was not included in the packet. So I hope you have a chance to look through that. Next slide, please. And then we can move on to the next slide. All right, so at the first February 2019 study session, the commission had these following key comments. The drill box concept was appreciated. You recommended that retention of divided light window styles. Also recommended gender neutral restrooms. Commission also recommended removal of all curb cuts on Hollis Street. Commission stated that the internal circulation needed some refinement and that the entrances should be enhanced, particularly the entrance on the east side. Next slide, please. So there, I'm going to briefly go over the changes to the proposal since the February Planning Commission Study Session last year. The one key change has been the parking lot reconfiguration. There's a change from a 90-degree parking to 60-degree parking spaces. This was to accommodate loading relocation of the city's trash enclosure on city-owned property and to make the parking spaces more usable to the general public. It has also included a new location for the trash enclosure, which will be shared by the city hall and art center. The reconfiguration of the parking also has resulted in a relocation of existing light bulbs and trees. Next slide, please. There have been some changes to the floor plan and the studio space has marginally increased by 500 square feet. However, the space has been reconfigured from 10 units to 18 units. Storage space, there has been a decrease in the attic storage space from around 5,000 square feet to about 1,500 square feet. And this is primarily due to structural accessibility and cost constraints. Gender-neutral restrooms are now being proposed in response to the commission comment. Let's look, please. There have been some change in the building materials on the north and the east elevations. And this is primarily due to cost and structural constraints. Brick is replaced by metal siding on the northern half of the east elevation and on the north elevation. On the east elevation, the brick facade and the existing divided light windows are retained on the southern portion so that visually there is no break as seen from the 40th Street. A weathering loger is also proposed on the entrance door on this elevation to provide some visual relief. And you'll be looking at these elevations momentarily. Regarding the north elevation, a green wall over the metal siding is proposed to bring warmth to the plaza area. Next slide, please. Curb cuts on Hollis, so all the curb cuts on Hollis Street have been eliminated in response to both commission and staff comments. The current opening and roll-up door on Hollis Street entry to Studio 6 and 7 will be preserved. The roll-up door will be preserved with a new storefront placed behind it. All the divided light window styles on this elevation are retained. Next slide, please. Short-term parking is now provided on Hollis Street as well as at the back of, near the parking lot, under the overhang of the city hall building. So both bike lockers and some additional parking, bicycle parking is provided under the overhang of the city hall building. Next slide, please. So this is the existing site and demolition plan. And I would like to draw your attention to the configuration of the parking lot. As you can see, it is 90 degrees. Spaces are aligned in 90 degrees. 90 degrees. And the black crosses that you see, that is the row of trees which would need to be relocated because of the reconfiguration of the parking lot. In addition to that, there are six streets along Hollis Street, which also will be removed as part of this project. And I will talk more about tree removal later down in the presentation. Next slide, please. So this is the proposed site plan. As you can see, the change in the parking lot configuration. Next slide, please. This is the circulation. I know it's a little difficult to see, but I'll draw your attention to the red circles. The red circle near Hollis Street is for short-term bicycle parking spaces. The other red circle on top of the screen shows the location of the bike lockers as well as our short-term bicycle parking spaces. The green rectangular along Hill Street is the location of the new trash enclosure. As you can see, the main entry has not changed from the last study session. It will be all Hollis. And the pedestrian circulation is seen in blue lines. You can also look at the loading configurations, which are shown in the green light. Next slide, please. This is the proposed floor plan. What you see in purple are the studio spaces, which are aligned along Hollis Streets as well as along the backside of the building. The open areas and the exhibition space is indicated in blue. The cafe is shown in pink. What is highlighted is the addition to the building and to the cafe. And this is done primarily so that it is aligned with the studio space along Hollis Street, which are obviously existing. Next slide, please. This is the upper level, a watchman's unit, and some storage space is being proposed. Again, this is not no different from the last time you saw that. However, the storage space on this level has been drastically reduced. And this is mainly due to structural and cost constraints. In addition, I'd just like to note that this upper level proposal will be built in a second phase, but we are introducing it now and it will be included for the entire moment when this project comes to the commission again. Next slide, please. So like I've mentioned, this is to be the city's contemporary visual and performing arts. In terms of operational details and management of the facility, this is still currently under negotiation between the Economic Development and Housing Division staff and the applicant as a part of the ERN process, which will result in a lease disposition and development agreement approved by the city council. This is anticipated to happen sometime in the future. Next slide, please. So these are the breakdown of different uses in the building. And you can see in terms of addition, it's essentially about 3,700 square feet of new space as part of this proposal. And this is basically the cafe space, extension of the cafe space, watchman's unit, and attic storage. Next slide, please. So these are the elevations that I will be going through. And the way to look at this is the one at the bottom is the existing elevation. And then one in the middle is kind of shows you what is going to be demolished, the areas and things that will be demolished. And the one on the top is the elevation. So you can see that there is what you see in the placing, that is the entry to the art center as well as the cafe space. Next slide, please. This is the 40th Street elevation. This has not changed too much from the last time. The drill box concept is still as part of the project. Next slide, please. This is the north elevation, the one that faces the old city hall and its part of the plaza. Fountain remains as before. This elevation will have metal siding. And the way to kind of mitigate the visual aspect of the proposal is to have a green wall. Next slide, please. This is the elevation facing the parking lot. And here too is the difference from what you saw earlier. As I mentioned, a portion of the build, of the brick, a portion of the building will be retained along with its windows. And this is what most folks would see from 40th Street. The demanding elevation will have the metal siding. And they have also proposed a sign on top of the entry at this level. Next slide, please. So signage, there are three main signs. There are two of them, which are roof signs. The roof signs, the way our regulations are set up, the size and the location, there's a bit of discretion of the planning permission. So you have one along Hollis Street, one along 40th Street. Next slide, please. So this kind of gives you both the elevation as well as the illustration, puts an idea of how big the sign would look in conversion to the building. Next slide, please. And this is the entrance on Hollis Street. Again, putting the signs and perspective of the building. Next slide, please. So this is the signage on top of the door that will be the entry from the parking lot. Next slide, please. Regarding the tree removal, so these are the existing six juniper trees along Hollis Street. And these are being moved to essentially accommodate some light into the studio space that will be behind us as well as to make the pedestrian experience a little bit better in terms of interaction between the street and the studio spaces. Next slide, please. There are 10 poplar trees in the parking lot. And as I've mentioned, these are also being proposed to be relocated in the sense, like I've mentioned, that because of the configuration, change in configuration of the parking lot, both the street light, I'm sorry, the light as well as the trees will need to be relocated as well. So the applicant has suggested that in terms of what they want to do with the trees is that they want to try and relocate the trees along Hollis Street and replant them on 40th Street. Whereas these trees on poplar trees, they would pull them out and then put them back in after the reconfiguration. Next slide, please. So the city asked the city arborists to do a report on these trees. And this report, which is attached to your staff report, states that although the juniper trees are in good condition, the cost of relocating the trees with the kind of care it will mean for the transplantation to be successful is likely to exceed their values. Regarding the poplar trees, they recommend that due to their low value, root-related issues and pest problems, they are not worth the situation of the age group. Next slide, please. So the city's urban forestry ordinance outlines the planting of replacement tree requirements. It states that the commission shall require the planting of replacement trees of equal cumulative diameter to the trees approved for removal and payment of the replacement value fee of the street trees. And when the replacement of the tree of equal diameter is not feasible due to site constraints, replacement at the largest practical diameter as determined by the PC is required. Next slide, please. So given what the arborist report states and given our ordinance's requirements, staff is recommending the following. One, new trees should be planted in the parking lot to align with the reconfigured parking spaces. Sidewalk along Hollis Street frontage should be relocated towards the building to allow for a new planters strip that is four feet wide between the curb and the sidewalk with at least six new trees planted at the strip. Olive trees should be at the largest specimens recommended by the city arborists and planted in conditions that will allow them to thrive. Staff is also recommending that the applicant should not be required to be replacement free in addition to planting of new trees in light of the considerable expense that they will incur in reconfiguring the parking lot and relocating the Hollis Street sidewalk. Next slide, please. A bit about public art. Our municipal court requires the city to expend an amount of 1.5% of the building costs for publicly accessible art on the site of the city-sponsored project, which this is. Art in public space is defined as being in a place which is accessible or visible to the general public a minimum of eight hours of this day. The project, staff believes that the project satisfies this requirement by creating the drill box along the corner of 40th and Hollis Streets, which will display art at all times. Staff, including a condition of approval that will ensure that there is display of artwork in the drill box area 24 hours and this will be... Next slide, please. In terms of conformity to the planning regulations, this site, the art center, most centers is classified as community assembly. The mission requires a major conditional use for this item. Next slide, please. In terms of height and floor area, the site is of 30 and 55-foot height district. 1.6 AFR. There is a small proposed increase in AFR, which is from 0.86 to 0.88. Regarding the height, the existing height is 18 and the resonating portion of the forentiated element will reach about 24 feet. So in sum, this project will not require any bonus points for either height or AFR. Next slide, please. Parking, so parking, as the commission may know, that the city council has changed parking regulations so that there are no longer any minimum parking requirement anymore. So with that change, which is in effect as we speak, the required parking for this use is 0 to 65 spaces. So the city parking lot has 50 spaces, which will serve both the art center and city offices. So the requirement is actually zero, since the minimum for any project in city today will be zero. But there is provision of some shared parking of the spaces, like I mentioned, with the art center and city offices. We ask Fair &amp; Clear to review not only the amount of parking as well as the parking lot reconfiguration and circulation of the project. They have, Fair &amp; Clear has identified a number of measures, including developing a transportation demand management plan. And the staff report outlines various other measures that this report has mentioned. I'd just like to note that a copy of the report was not provided because the report has not been finalized. But it will be provided the next time we appear for consideration of this use permit. And you'll have the full report, which will be finalized and you'll have the parking lot reconfiguration examined. In terms of bicycle parking, so initially before the change in parking regulations requiring no minimum parking, the auto parking was coupled with bicycle parking. So with the change in auto parking, bicycle parking has now been decoupled from the auto parking. So what this means is in terms of bicycle requirement... So what this means is, in terms of bicycle uh requirements, one space for every ten on parking spaces of the estimated demand is one if possible requirement. And this is regardless of whether auto parking is provided or what is actually proposed. So uh with this calculation, uh what this project requires is eight short term and eight long term. And the proposal is eight short term, uh which are distributed uh near Hollis and one near the parking lot. And the eight bike closets are provided uh near parking lot under the board hang. Next slide please. So this is a significant structure by our, uh by the planning regulations definitions. Uh and the designated significant structures and it's uh include contrasting concrete lintel over door and two windows, industrial windows with concrete caps relieved in brickwork. Uh preservation and reuse of any significant structure needs a use permit with the finding that the proposed project will retain and enhance all or most of the features of the structure that make it significant. Uh we believe that these features will be retained and are, are enhanced. Next slide please. Uh so can I just tap down? I forgot to remove the animation uh on this, so just keep going down. Yeah, thank you. So these are the main issues uh that the commission needs to consider and we would give, we should give feedback and comment on it is with the changes to the building in terms of design. Uh regarding the trees, should the applicant relocate and replant the existing trees or replace them with new trees? Should the street trees be planted in a new plant district along Hollis Street? And of course, any other uh comments that the commission may have. So that concludes my presentation. Uh if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer. Uh obviously, the applicant also has a presentation for me.
Thank you, Maru. Uh so at this point, I want to open it up for questions uh from the commission. Uh for the purpose of, of seeing organized during questions, I'll um follow the list um on, as it appears on the agenda, um beginning with Commissioner Donaldson and then ending with uh myself and and Vice Chair Thompson. Uh Commissioner Donaldson, do you have any questions?
For Maru, yes, I have, my one question is regarding the ADA accessible parking. And the, the staff report said that ADA parking should be um provided based on the parking demand for the art center. But since the parking lot is also serving city hall, is there a requirement that there be enough ADA spaces to satisfy demand for both uses?
Yes, they have not, they're not showing it at this time. ADA is typically reviewed at the building permit stage. So, but this was considered during the reconfiguration of the parking lot and with the understanding that it will serve both uh the art center and the city offices. So you will see that the next time uh we are here, you'll see which ones are ADA and, and how that is uh worked out.
Thank you, that's all that I was, that's the only question I have.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Keller, do you have any questions for Maru or staff?
Uh I have a couple for Maru. Um I don't have an issue with the signage, I, I like it the way it is. But I was just wondering, yeah, um rather than having them above the parapet or on the parapet, have we looked at mounting them right on the side of the building, kind of below where they are now? So they're a little less intrusive and kind of a little bit more blended to the building? Has that been looked at, do you know?
Uh no, I do not know whether it has been looked at because of the, I'm looking at these signs. So any comments that you have would be much appreciated.
Like I said, I like them, I don't mind signs so much, but it just seems that they might be a little bit more subtle if they're mounted on the building, kind of a little where they are shown now. So I'd like to just see maybe some options, looking up both of those. And then also, um for the sidewalks along Hollis Street, uh regardless to where we put trees, whether they're up against the building or in our planting strip along the street, are we retaining the maximum width of usable sidewalk for pedestrians in both those scenarios?
Uh I don't have a sidewalk bridge in front of me, uh but you, one I need to remember that uh the building footprint is not changing except for the, uh the cafe edition that is pushed out in order to have the same, uh to line up with the remaining building. And, and so it may not meet a full requirements of the sidewalk.
Okay, so all of this, I'll discuss that in my comments at the end. But I just think we want to retain the life cycle to begin, I think we could do that one way or another. But I'll do that in the comments section, thank you, that's all I have.
And one, just a follow-up to that, uh we, the applicant has been advised to provide a landscape plan. Uh so you will see that and that will really kind of will work out as to how to maximize the sidewalk width, uh given the landscape.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Mendez?
Um yes, I have a couple of questions, um to get a little bit more familiar with the building. Um is there an outdoor component to this project um that allows the public to participate without actually going inside the building?
Uh the only outdoor component is what would come with the cafe and the cafe seating in the plaza area. Other than that, in terms of the artwork, if you want you're inside the building and if you are looking for artwork, then there is no outside. Does that make sense?
Okay, yes, it does. And then um the second question is, um how would you access the, uh the jewel boxes that they're pointing out in the, in, in the, in the floor plan? If you, you have to go in through the building to actually access the jewel boxes?
That is correct. You will, you will need to enter the building to access the jewel box. From the outside, uh it would be only visual. And along, oh, oh, I'm sorry, and along on the Fortieth Street, uh the entry is for loading, not for general public.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, that was another question of mine. Um and then my last question is, um can you, uh can you just clarify in the floor plan what is public versus what is private? Or is the entire, um is the entire interior component public?
I, you know, I am not, uh I would let the applicant respond to that uh because my understanding is that other than the studios, uh everything else would be public. But I do see there are a number of offices and conference rooms, which are meant for interaction with those who use the studios uh and, and having, you know, and having coworking and creating coworking spaces. So uh David, if you can, just keep, make a note of that to respond to that question that the, that Commissioner Mendez has mentioned, please.
Happy to respond to your presentation. Thank you, David.
Thank you, and that was it for me.
Great. Uh all right, moving on, uh we have Commissioner Young.
No questions at this time, thank you for a nice presentation, Maru, thank you guys.
No questions, um and Vice Chair Thompson? Do you have any questions for staff at this point?
Yeah, I think my, my only question was actually related to the sidewalk as well. Um I think it's really imperative that there's additional information on it. Uh but you answered that there isn't at this time, so I just say that we need more information on it.
No doubt.
Thank you. All right, uh in terms of uh my questions, um I um have a couple of questions about the space and the, the studio spaces. Um it, that might pertain better to the applicant himself. And, and I have questions about how those, um we envision those studios to be used. Um and if, if you can answer that for me when we get there. Uh and, and also, Maru, I have a question about the sidewalk and how it might connect to the Fortieth Street plans that we reviewed last year. And wondering if, if there's a way for um us to, to see those plans um, um to address the, the questions um brought up by, by Commissioner Keller and Thompson um when we see this again um in our next meeting. Would that be possible?
Absolutely, uh we, I will have uh information both on Hollis Street as well as how it uh works with the Fortieth Street plan and what is happening on Fortieth Street. There, there's a great difference as well, so you'll have, I'll have that, those uh plans for you next time.
Great, thank you. Uh those are all my questions for now. Um and at this point, um I want to um invite the applicant to, um for their presentation, if you're ready.
Great, uh thank you Chair Guerrero. Uh good evening commissioners, uh Dave Dial from Orton Development. I'm joined by Tyran Singh, project architect from Marcy Wong, Don Logan Architects. We're here today to speak on the Emeryville Art Center and the adaptive reuse of the Union Stanford. Uh whoops. We go to the beginning. Chair.
Oh, sorry, I'm not sure how that happened. Sorry, is that the first slide?
Yes, it is, and I, the next slide, please. We're excited to be partnering with the city on this project to bring forth the much anticipated art center for the community. And I'll ask Tyran to present the site and architectural elements. And then I will close by discussing the updated program for the building. And I'll be glad during my part to attempt to uh answer some of the questions that were raised by the commissioners. Uh Tyran?
Hi, uh good evening, this is Tyran Singh from Marcy Wong, Don Logan Architects. I'm the art, uh project architect for the project. Uh we are very, very excited to be working with OBI to help bring life back to this uh dilapidated industrial building and to transform it into a very vibrant twenty-first century cultural destination for the community. So what I'm going to do tonight is to walk you through the, the key architectural features of the, the project. Um I, I can thank Maru for going uh over the site uh in details, uh so I, I'll be skimming through these uh site stuff. Next slide please. So as you know, the, the project is founded by two very busy streets. The Hollis Street on the west side, which is the bottom of the, the screen, and the Fortieth Street on the south side, uh to the right of the street. And then on the nor, uh on the east side is the city parking lot and on the north side is the whole city hall. Uh next slide please. So Maru already covered the site circulation. So to summary, uh to summarize it, we have the main entrance on the Hollis Street side. Uh directly opposite from that uh main entrance on the other side from the parking lot, we have uh another entrance for people just coming by car, uh entering from the parking lot side. And for the loading, we have a cafe loading on the north side of the building between the city hall, uh all from the parking lot, not from the street at all. Uh and so the loading for the uh cafe will be from, from the north side of the, the building. And the loading for the gallery and the patio will be from the south side of the building through a existing loading door that's facing the Fortieth Street. Uh next slide please. Uh next slide please. So here is a diagram um showing these key architectural features of uh the building. So what you're looking at, uh this uh colored in orange is the existing uh brick wall that has the significant architectural features that we want to preserve. Uh the, the, the significant architecture, as, as mentioned earlier by Maru and, and in the staff report, are those brick walls with uh concrete lintels over the openings and the steel divided line windows. So uh this section highlighted in orange uh has all those elements and we are preserving all these existing uh si- significant element features uh for the project. Uh and then uh, um on the parking lot side, uh two-thirds on the left, uh on the screen here, uh showing uh dark gray, uh it, it's the section that also along the, the north elevation facing the city hall side. It's a section that we're prepare, uh we're proposing to replace it with a metal steel wall. And the reason for that is uh because of the structural safety reason and, and um which uh the, the, this, this arrangement will also allow us to bring light and opening windows and uh a much better uh design for the, the building. So that, that, the section that's colored in green is the section we are proposing to put the living wall, the, the green wall, that will lighten up the, the space between the city hall and the, the building. And lastly, the, the, the section that is covered in blue are the uh glass storefronts or the uh glass walls that we're proposing. Uh on the northwest corner is the cafe edition and the main entrance, uh showing blue. And on the southwest corner, uh the corner of Hollis Street and Fortieth Street is the, what we call the jewel box, that will become a focal point at this intersection. Next slide please. So we're gonna look into the each elevation. So this is the, called uh Hollis Tree elevation. Um from the bottom to the top, uh the bottom is the existing, a photo of the existing elevation. The, the middle is the demolition elevation and the top is the, the proposed elevation. So you can see, we are preserving this uh existing brick facade with the, uh the divided window and concrete lintels. And for this portion that is setback from the street, uh which is on the left-hand side of this uh elevation, um yeah, we're proposing a, a glass storefront and sliding windows um to, to uh make it more transparent. So, so let's look at the next slide actually, please, next slide. So here you can see, uh what we're proposing here is uh, uh to open up that extinct brick wall that was setback from the street. So this allows us to see into the building, to see the exit trusses, uh the coworking space and the cafe seating, um and the lobby. So provides a much uh more engaging uh for the people passing by this, the, the, the space. And inside the lobby, uh a double calculator, uh the, what, we will have a li- uh, a library for art and other stuff. So um the, the, the goal of this is to make connections, uh to, to connect the, the building to the street and then provide a more inviting uh environment into the building. Uh next slide please. So this is the west, uh sorry, the south elevation, the elevation facing the Fortieth Street. And as you see, uh the using, uh there's existing uh, uh black corrugated metal shed, we call it. Uh and we are replacing it with what we call it a jewel box, a old glass box that uh becomes the exhibit showcase of this art center. So uh let's look at next slide please. Uh so you can see there, there's uh, um in, in this, in jewel box, uh there's a lot of possibility we, uh the, the, the vision is that it can be, there, there will be sculptures, the, there will be art installations, um projections or any, any artwork that people can turn around. And, and this will allow people passing by this busy corner uh to, to really see the art and, and and, and feel the art without actually going inside the building. Also, another thing about this is that you can see there's a big existing opening in the brick wall here that will allow people passing by this corner to see inside into the gallery space and, and get a visual connection with the inside of the gallery. Um another, another thing that, uh cheap, I, this glass box is that it reveals the existing brick wall that was originally concealed by this uh, uh, a metal shed. So now we can see this uh nice brick facade uh in the backdrop. Uh next slide please. So this is the parking lot elevation. Um, uh you, you see, uh we are preserving the left-hand side of the, the, uh, the, the building, uh which has the divided window and concrete lintels. However, on the right-hand side, right-hand two-thirds of the, the elevation, uh it appears that it, it is uh built, originally built it appears that it is built, originally built against another building that was existed when the building was built. You can see by how this mortar of the brick wasn't finished. It looks like it was constructed against another building. So notice, when this building was originally built, this facade, this portion of the facade wasn't visible. So what we are proposing here is to replace that this not so attractive brick facade and un-reinforced, not scrupulous sound facade with a newly scrupulously engineered wall, star wall, that is lighter and with window openings that bring light into the studios and offices. And we're carrying this, we're borrowing this language from the existing shaft that we saw on the Fortieth Street corner, using this corrugated metal siding for this new wall. Next slide, please. So this entrance is enhanced by this recessed, this is the entrance from the parking lot into the building. We step a few steps down because there's elevation difference between the parking lot and the existing building. So we step a few steps down into a alcove, recessed alcove that is crowded with wood siding, both on the wall and on the soffit. Makes it a really nice contrast and inviting entrance. On top of that, we're enhancing this entrance with a logo that is designed by a local Emeryville designer, a logo designed for the art center. So seeing this is a pretty attractive entrance that will serve the people well. Next slide, please. So this is the elevation that faces the city hall. As you can see, again, we are replacing this un-reinforced measuring wall with a new metal star wall and metal siding. And to soften it and make it more compatible with the use at this courtyard plaza space, we're proposing a living wall to make it more inviting and more comfortable for people to enjoy the space here. Next slide, please. So we're back to the corner of the cafe, northwest corner of the building where there's the cafe and the entrance. This rendering show how this outdoor seating and, I mean, just imagine the people sitting here and the lights that happens here and the visual connection you can see into the space and the smell of the coffee. And we are pretty excited about making this happen. So I hope we can move this forward and get this to reality. Now I'll turn it back to David for talking about the program and the interiors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyran. Commissioners, the program elements of the art center have not changed since we last reviewed the project with you in February 2019. The project remains a unique blend of arts and commercial uses that will provide activity throughout the day and week. Next slide. Uh, next slide. The heart of the project is the arts program. It's of, it is fundamental to the program and will take up approximately two-thirds of the footprint in the building. Joined to that, and key to the project's sustainability, are its commercial uses in the other third of the building. These uses help to activate the project and will support the project financially. Next slide. The art uses include the gallery and the theater space here in blue. Moving from left to right, the forum space is a multi-function theater space. With its retractable seating, the forum can be used as a theater for presentations, performances, meetings, or lectures. It is also convertible to a gallery space once the seats have been retracted. The main gallery space is the large blue area to the right of your screen. It's designed as a blank canvas on which diversity of exhibits can be mounted. As Tyran mentioned, the jewel box on the south side of the building creates interaction between the exhibits inside and foot and vehicle traffic on Fortieth Street. These spaces will be the home of the annual Emeryville Celebration of the Arts for seven weeks each fall. The other time will feature exhibits and artistic programming curated by the art center non-compete. These exhibits will be both free to the public and then some of them paid exhibits. Next slide. Here we have highlighted the 19 artist studios and classrooms. These studios will be occupied by artists and makers and the classroom used by arts educators. We're providing naturally lit spaces as well as dark spaces to support a wide variety of art making. The studios range in size from 225 square feet to over 700. Many of the studios can be combined into larger spaces if the market desires. Chair Guerrero, you asked, how will these studios be used? And we're intending to rent these studios long-term to artists and makers. And depending on their art form, we could see some of the larger studios being used as maybe a dance studio and multiple classes taking place throughout the day and evening. We could see makers that are creating jewelry or doing other high-tech art items in the studios, as well as traditional art forms, painting, sculpting, that sort of thing. At the moment, we aren't anticipating any kiln space or any kind of artwork that would involve flames or fire.
Thank you for the clarification, David.
Okay, next slide. This slide shows the office and co-working space that will provide individual and small organization private offices, as well as meeting rooms and an open co-working office space. These are adjacent to the main entrance and main lobby and reception area to the building. And as Tyran mentioned, between the lobby and the co-working area, we envision creating a small arts publication, library, and lounge that would be open to the public. Next slide. Lastly, we have the cafe space with the smaller addition to increase seating and potential spacing for the cafe. Sliding windows in this annex will increase the interaction with passersby on Hollis. I love the vision that Tyran shared about that space. And next slide. So together, we think these uses will make for a vibrant art center, active in the morning as people come for coffee and start their workday in the office area, and active well into the night with exhibit goers and theater activities. I want to address some of the questions that came up. And then would welcome other questions. Vice Chair Thompson and Commissioner Keller asked about the sidewalk widths on Hollis. They're currently six foot five as we measure them with a number of curb cuts. Because of the industrial use of the building, we are planning to fill in those curb cuts. And up until, we're receiving the staff report and planned on maintaining the sidewalk width, but would be interested in your input on that. Commissioner Mendez, you asked about the outdoor component. And I hope we've made it clear that part of the vision for the jewel box is that interaction, is that interplay between folks outside the building and the artwork inside. The exhibits that we have planned for the multipurpose room and occasionally for the forum would be a combination of some requiring admission fee. But I would say, I would venture to say, most would be open to the public with a voluntary fee. And I address the studio use. Next slide. Yeah, I think in closing, Tyran and I look forward to public comments. We look forward to hearing the thoughts of the Commissioners and are here to answer any questions we may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. So at this point, I want to open it up for questions from the Commission. And I'll begin again with Commissioner Donaldson. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
I have a couple of questions about the Hollis Street facade. And one of them is, in talking about removing those trees and having the windows, talking about activating the front of the building along Hollis so that people can see what's going on inside. Is that, could you speak a little bit more to that about how the studios, are they supposed to be visible? Is that something that you think that working artists are going to want to be working in a manner that people walking by are looking at what they're doing in there? I'm just, I'm curious about how that interaction is envisioned. I like the windows, I like the idea of light coming in, but I'm not quite sure that it's going to activate the street in the way that's being described.
Sure. And I think we would, the priority for us is the quality of light within the studio for those who are making art. They would have the option of determining how open their studio space was and when it would be open. But we do see a number of occasions where artists may want to show some of their wares to the public. Maybe not all the time, but frequently. And I think that's the interplay that we're looking for. And depending on the type of art, we had looked at combining possibly Studio 12 and 13 as a small yoga studio or dance studio. And there, there might be some interplay. That's the studios on the corner of Hollis and Fortieth.
There's a reference in the staff report to the roll-up door that's going to be restored at Studios 6 and 7 with a new storefront placed behind? I was confused by that.
Yeah, so an earlier iteration of our plans had us replacing that roll-up door with a working roll-up door and then creating a small alcove with the storefront entrance beyond it. Our current plan is to just replace that roll-up door with a faux roll-up door facade, if you will, the corrugated metal finish to replicate the roll-up door.
Okay, one other question is that I have some concerns about the performing arts space, the forum, in terms just of the infrastructure that one might need to present performances there. At the west end of the forum, there's now two studios and there's the retractable seating. But I'm not seeing a place where one would have a projection capability, projection equipment, soundboard, sound equipment, things that might be used for lighting controls and that, and things that might be used for enhancing the performance space. Could you talk about that a little bit, where that might, how that might work?
Sure. And it is a keen interest of mine. My background is primarily in the performing and visual arts on the production side. We've engaged the Shalit Collaborative, the theatrical consultant, to assist us with this space. They've worked with a number of spaces very similar to this. Some in schools, some as community spaces. It is our intent to have, I guess, a robust theatrical lighting system. We are working with Meyer Sound Laboratories to have a high-quality audio system in the space. And we will have a digital projector in the space, a video projector in the space. The size of the room itself limits how much space we can dedicate to the technical uses. I think to the ODC Theater Space in San Francisco, where a lot of their technical wares are out in the open with the audience. And that's the kind of space this would be. A lot of production can be run by an iPad these days. And it's our intent that we would have that sort of technology in the space. Because it is a flat-floor room and we're trying to use it as a gallery, we do have some limitations on the screen size, for example. In order not to have this screen interfered with by people's heads, the screen will probably be four feet off the floor. And with the defined ceiling there, it will limit how big that screen is. So it won't be panoramic from one side of the room to the other. But it will be of adequate size to serve all of the seating. So those are just examples of things that we are focused on in the space.
Okay, and in the previous versions that we saw, there was a little bit more detail about the offices and about the studios. And they were showing things like sinks in the studios. I assume that's still happening, that you're still equipping all those places with that kind of infrastructure?
Yeah, I think we're looking at sinks, exhaust fans, and then very basic lighting and allowing the artists to use the space as they'd like and address the space the way they'd like. There is a change in the offices that we have. We have a number of smaller offices and a number of smaller studios. And that has been in response to input from a broker. And in order to make affordable spaces, folks, you know, these days would like to get things sort of in round numbers. So we're trying to create spaces that can be afforded by professionals.
Okay, that's what I have for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm muted. There we go. Thank you, Commissioner Donaldson. All right, at this point, I'll move on with questions from Commissioner Keller.
I have no questions currently. Thank you.
Got it. And do we have any questions from Commissioner Mendez?
I just have one question. I noticed that there weren't any windows on the interior looking into the studio spaces. Can you explain the concept behind that?
Sure. What we are attempting to do with the multi-uses of the space is to max, for the gallery, maximize as much exhibit space as we can. So the doors already interrupt a fairly long exhibit wall. And we had some discussion about maybe putting lights above, lights as in windows, window openings, if you will, at the top of the wall. But we decided to maintain, I guess the answer to your question is, we're attempting to maximize as much exhibit wall space as possible.
Thank you.
I'm muted. Miguel, you're muted again. Commissioner Yan, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you.
sides of where one seats on those removal, is that a tier? Have the back row slightly higher than the first row? Or does it all sit at the same level?
Very good question. It's tiered seating. We're trying to take advantage of as much of the height in the space. We are actually poking up into, into the rafters, if you will, at the back row. And then the first four rows, I believe, or the first three rows are on the ground. So the first three rows flat, and then the rows behind that have a gradual rise to them.
Okay. And are you imagining that the floor surfaces would be carpeted, or are they hard floors?
In the forum and in the multipurpose room, we are looking to have an industrial look with concrete essentially, a polished concrete floor.
Thank you. And also, in terms of the cafe, I really, I really think it's interesting. In terms of what the uses are, would people be able to potentially cater, or, I mean, essentially cook and maybe in a minor level? Obviously, it's not an oven kitchen, but would a caterer be able to come in and use some of that space to temporarily refrigerate something in over a period of time, you know, for that kind of events? Odors or something like that?
Sure. So the way we've addressed that need is, to the east of the forum is a green room. And we are anticipating, it has a sink and some service space as well as electrical outlets for hot boxes. It won't permit cooking in the space. And our experience has been that not a lot of caterers actually cook in the space, but they do need space for reheating and plating. And we're anticipating a lot of that can be done in the green room. We're looking to have the cooperation of our kitchen, I'm sorry, our cafe vendor, so that they may be able to work out an arrangement with outside caterers, or what we do anticipate is that they would cater a number of events themselves.
Okay, and then in terms of the jewel box window showcase, do one visualize that one can actually do projections on that glass itself to offer something really interesting? I've seen some really, I know that there's a lot of like installation artists that would like that ability to really go nuts with that in terms of power and that sort of thing?
Yes, we would definitely have power there, and I think easily treating the windows with a translucent, excuse me, a translucent material would allow for projections or the mounting of flat screens in those windows to create the kind of artwork that you're describing.
And my last question is, and thank you very much for those. And my last question is, in terms of a ceiling lighting plan, I'm a little unclear, does the offices and hallways just open up to the ceiling and so it's one general lighting or we'll grab all these, or do these studios and offices have the ability to control their lighting within their own spaces?
I think code in Title 24 requires that each space have its own control, and that is our plan. The offices actually have a laid-in ceiling above them, just a typical acoustic tile ceiling. And the studios are open to, up into the rafters, but they will have individual lighting fixtures for each room.
That's all my questions. Oh, can you, when someone mentioned the word kiln, I just got muffled for a second. Can you please revisit that for a second? Kiln, yes or no?
No, we're not anticipating, and we haven't outfitted any of the studios for that kind of work. Pottery tends to be dusty work.
Right.
So, and I think there are a number of fabulous studios, pottery studios in the East Bay that certainly need.
That's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Yan. All right, and Vice Chair Thompson, do you have questions at this point?
Sure. Yeah, quick question. Now, last time when we reviewed this project, so questions came up around storage and operations, and people were really wondering sort of how, whether there was enough storage and how operations would work. Has there been any advancement in the thinking of that?
There has been a tremendous amount of thinking. I think if you look and compare square footage, we are actually losing storage in this, in this plan. Our fallback position is, is recapturing a studio if additional storage space is needed. I know Sharon Wilshar, I actually just received an email from her this afternoon expressing concern about stored space in the building. Our plan is to off-site storage of things that don't need to be accessed. So when installing a traveling show, we intend to unfortunately pay to have those crates stored off-site and if need be at a art warehouse. And the reason for that is the building has a relatively small footprint, and our diversity of uses has really reduced the amount of art space, even though it's two-thirds in actual square footage. It's about 20,000 or a little less in square feet. So rather than use a large amount of that for storage and have art not happen in the building, we're currently favoring the art-making in the space. And then if we lose that fight, if you will, converting a studio into storage space.
Okay. Yeah, another question, you know, I saw the renderings, I like the idea of the green wall. I don't have a really good sense of how it would be constructed. It was really just a veneer, computer-generated, you know, material. So what is the developed thinking on the green wall?
Sure, I'll ask Tyrann to address that question. Tyrann?
Yeah, so if you have been to the Self Force Plaza, the self, transparent terminal, the new Self Force building, there's a roof garden there, you'll see they have similar corrugated metal siding, building walls with a kind of three-dimensional wire mesh structure that's attached to the metal, of course, corrugated metal siding, to allow lines going on that green screen. So that's what we're intending to use here, is to have a supporting structure attached to the metal siding that allows it to grow, the fire to grow inside of it.
Okay, yeah, it'd be great to know sort of the thickness of it and some of that detail. And then the other question I had is, the question about the relevance to the city design guidelines and the city general plan? And I think this is really where my question about the sidewalk is emanating from, is because Horton, although it is a small sidewalk and it is a main road, it is a priority road, priority pedestrian way in a lot of our regulations. And so, you know, this is just more a question about information, questions about relevance to those documents. It'd be great to get information on that. I didn't see any, I don't know if you have more thoughts on that.
Is that a question for the applicant or for?
It's for the applicant because the question about how it informs the design intent.
Yeah, so we do have access to those documents, and I think Marcy Wong, Don Logan, architects have referred to them. There is, our agreed-upon project site is actually tight to the building. The property lines to that building are tight to the building. So we are actually looking for guidance from the city in terms of those changes to the parking lot, to the Fortieth Street and Hollis side. So I think we're open to those discussions, but we, I'm repeating myself, but we really have been looking for city guidance in terms of.
Okay. Yeah, I have one final question. Another thing that we emphasize in our documents is sustainability and energy efficiency, and it's rare that applicants have that information. Have you looked into that? Do you have information? When will you have information on those?
Yeah, and so we have started that process. We've engaged Stoke as our environmental engineers, I probably have that wrong, as sustainability consultants. We are looking for a LEED equivalency and not a LEED certification. And again, that's a budgetary decision that we're making. I believe, Tyrann, we're LEED gold.
Yes, we are targeting for LEED gold.
Yeah. And a requirement, another similar requirement is solar-ready. And Tyrann, we, how many square feet are we anticipating in terms of?
Yeah, we are anticipating 6,000 square feet of the roof area will be solar-ready.
So I, Vice Chair Thompson, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, I think it answered the question, and I think, you know, the part that isn't the question is, is, you know, keep giving us more, and we look forward to getting more information and detail on that.
Sure.
All right, do you have any more questions there? Okay, great. Are there any other questions from the commission at this point? No? Commissioner Donaldson, it sounds, looks like you may have some question.
Yeah, could you speak a little bit to the phasing where you are talking about putting off the second-story storage and the watchman's, watchperson's unit? It's, what kind of future phase are we talking about here?
Sure. That aspect of the project is something that we thought was a great idea. We envisioned possibly using the watchman's unit as a residence for a arts residency program, where an artist may actually occupy that space for several months in connection with their work with the art center in presenting and making art. The challenge we have, and this is part of our negotiations with the city, is that there is, the city is, is supplying the capital for the project, and there is a limited amount of capital for the project, and there are limitations to how much equity we as developer can put in. And I think it's just staffing, this clean, prudent, to make sure that we don't spend more on the project than can be recaptured through leases and grants. So all that is to say, our plan is to fundraise in the future for that phase. So we're providing a lot of the structural infrastructure for that space. You'll notice on the floor plan that Studio 2A is actually where the vertical circulation will go, if, once the watchman's unit and the stored space is brought forward. But we are, we're pushing it later, possibly many years later, and hope that we can find somebody to contribute the funds for that unit.
And that includes the bulk of the storage space then as well?
That's correct.
My last question is, do you know comparatively over the last, the celebration of the arts has grown and grown and grown. Do you know how much square footage they've used in the last couple of years and how that compares with the space here?
Yeah, so our understanding, and I will double-check with Sharon on this, but our understanding of their need or their requirement is 10,000 square feet, and we have that 10,000, we have, we have developed a program around that 10,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Donaldson. All right, so if there are no other further questions from the commission, I have a couple questions myself. David, I'm looking at the layout of the different studios in the building, and I see that there's just one classroom/studio at Studio 1. Can you explain the difference between that studio versus the others, and if there's any flexibility for the others to become classrooms as well?
Good question. So the classroom will probably have greater finishes than the other studio spaces. It'll be ready to go. It is more a wet lab, if you will, you know, it'll have a concrete floor, a sink in it, a counter, really designed for the making of art and for hands to get dirty. We, in our programming of the space, we're hoping that that is sufficient space to meet the demand. And folks that we've talked to, both in Emeryville and locally in Oakland and Albany, that need, that kind of classroom art-making space. We do have a number of meeting rooms that we're anticipating could be available sort of at the end of the workday or as the co-working space starts to empty out, and could be used for literacy, a literacy classroom, if you will, for chapter 510, the Department of Make the Lead to do bookmaking and writing courses. And the same thing for music lessons. Depending on the schedule on the weekends, we might be able to use a classroom for a given, I mean, I'm sorry, a meeting room for a given number of hours for music lessons.
And in terms of the studio spaces, you mentioned earlier that the studio spaces were increased, the number was increased to allow for more affordability with the cost of units, or the studios. Can you speak to that in terms of, like, what's your plan for the affordability? Is it, are you planning on having all the studios be a similar class, or is there a certain ratio of studios that will be available at a lower cost for artists?
Yeah, so I think the lower cost is driven primarily by the size of the space, but the sort of magic number we've been looking at is sort of a $1,000 price point. You know, it can't, do we have a number of studios that hover around that point? So they're clearly going to be on the smaller side, that 200 square feet, but we essentially chopped, I think, four or five studios in half to create those smaller studios. And that comes from Eddie Wharton, the owner of the company's experience in Jingle Town in creating artists' workspace, and are creating studios in places like Flint Inc. and Berkeley and some of our other projects. So I think the market will determine how big a studio artists want, and the way we're designing them, we can easily move the demising walls to create bigger spaces if there's a demand.
Okay. So at this point, it sounds as though there's not a plan to have, like, designated affordable studios for maybe a low-income artist or something like that?
There is not.
Okay. Got it, thank you, David. And just two more questions, one pertaining to the all-gender restroom. I'm glad that that's incorporated, and it wasn't clear to me when looking at the design whether those were actual individual stalls or individual little rooms that would be enclosed by a full door.
I'll ask Tyrann to address that question.
Okay, so the design of this all-gender restroom is that the entry, after you enter the door, is an area with a after you enter the door, is an area with a trough sink that is shared by both genders. And then we have two family rooms that is like typical accessible restrooms with a door. And then we have these maybe around 15, 17 stalls that are with a privacy partition. So with zero sign line privacy partition, it goes from board to ceiling with no gap at the door. So that's the intent. There's a family restroom for people with, that they can use with the sink inside and also with the smaller stalls that has privacy partitions.
Got it, thank you. I think that's all my questions for now. And before we open it up for public comment, looking for any further questions from commissioners?
I have one other question. This is the, you know, the classic question everyone is getting right now. Our economics are upside down. And throughout this, this presentation, we've heard about that the market will determine. I wondered if the team has any sense what the future might hold in the sense that, you know, whether the high rent situation will change or other factors they're considering, they're considering.
That's a loaded question. Thank you for that. It is something we have spent the last three months discussing internally and the last two months with greater urgency. I think when we return to you, we will have really reconsidered the size of the cafe, looking at what is happening nationally, what's happening in the Bay Area, and what's happening in Emeryville. We do have a concern over that much square footage and the landscape, if you will, the ecosystem, restaurateurs, of who would be available to take that space. So we're hoping to make it slightly smaller, to make it more appealing. We haven't done a rent analysis. We met with our broker a couple of months ago and then were on a call about a month ago about the spaces. And at the point a month ago, rents hadn't, actually, let me put it this way, subleased space hadn't come to market the way it has in the last several weeks. So I will admit, we do not have a good crystal ball on that. But we are standing by and we figure with the on-ramp of this project being about a year or slightly more, that more will become apparent as we're building.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question, David, and it pertains to a question that Commissioner Donaldson asked earlier about sinks. I think that's a really important element that, like, I'm not seeing which studios have sinks. And it sounds as though most of them may be utilizing mediums that require them cleaning up afterwards. And so I'm wondering if, like, do you have a number of, how many of these studios have sinks? And are they prepared with that kind of equipment?
I'm going to take a, oh, they're actually shown on the drawings. So if you look.
Which page?
I'm sorry, on G101, the code analysis page.
Got it.
They are the squares that are on the inward side of each of the studios. So all of the studios have a sink. If, let's see, if you look at Studios 6 and 7 on the Hollis Street side, the sinks are on the top of the page of those studios. And then Studios 17 and 18, the studio, the sinks are on a shared wall. The plan is everyone to have a sink, a wash tub essentially in each one of those rooms.
Excellent. Those are all my questions for now. So at this point, want to, can I hear somebody?
Chair Guerrero?
Yes.
This is Charlie. Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to just address Vice Chair Thompson's question about the sidewalk and the general plan and the design guidelines. The general plan designates this area, as she indicated, as a pedestrian priority zone. And the Emeryville Design Guidelines have dimensional standards for sidewalks for pedestrian priority zones. It is a 12-foot sidewalk corridor, including an eight-foot pedestrian pathway and a four-foot landscape planting strip between the pedestrian pathway and the curb. It appears from their drawings that the, from the curb to the face of the building along Hollis Street is a little over 12 feet. It looks like about 12 feet and 11 inches, almost 13 feet. So it appears there would be sufficient room along that frontage to put in a pedestrian pathway and planter strip that would comply with the guidelines. And I would suggest you could either have a planter strip with, you know, dirt and ground cover between the trees. Or if this was preferred, you could have the whole thing paved all the way across from the face of the building to the curb and then have tree wells for the street trees. In either case, of course, you should have enough rootable soil volume so that the trees would thrive. So I think there is room to meet the guidelines and the general plan criteria for the pedestrian priorities zone in this location.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
I have one, I just have one other comment, if possible.
We're still on questions, question of y'all? Do you have a question or a comment?
Yes, I do, it's a question, thanks for asking. In the, in the multipurpose gallery, is there a sink in that gallery? I was trying to look in the main one.
There is not.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So if there are no further questions from the commission at this point, want to go ahead and open up for public comment for any members of the public that are joining us and would like to do a comment for this item? All right. Sharon, do we have any submissions for comments at this point?
At this time, we have no electronic submissions. And I'm not seeing any raised hands in the Zoom meeting. Oh, I would like to mention that if anybody is using audio only to participate in the meeting, there is also star nine they can press to indicate that they wish to comment.
All right. We'll give members of the public just a few moments here to have that opportunity if they'd like. All right, any submissions at this point?
None.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment for this item and open it up for deliberation from the commission, beginning again with Commissioner Donaldson.
Thank you. I think that the project is moving along and it's interesting. But the things that I ask questions about are still things that I have concerns about, primarily the infrastructure for the forum space so that it really is a functional and usable performance space. I really would like to see more detail on how that is really going to work and what the space is going to look like on the inside and how the functional pieces for the lighting and the sound and the projection would actually operate in order to be reassured that the space will be as good as it can be. I am concerned about the storage capacity. I think that that's going to be problematic, especially if the bulk of it isn't going to be installed for a number of years. I like the treatments of the exterior. I don't mind having the wall with the metal panels on it. And it was, it was interesting to hear the analysis that that building used to be up against something else where you couldn't see the wall anyway. So that's why it doesn't look so good right now. I'm happy to see the green walls, both on the north side near the cafe, but also at the north of the entrance. And it is going to be a little bit challenging to get the right plants. I wouldn't want to see that done with vines, with an attempt to get vines to go up because I don't think that there's enough sun to promote that kind of robust growth. And there's also an opportunity to do something that's a lot more interesting, like the wall at that Moma in San Francisco that actually is a piece of art itself. And it incorporates a lot of ferns and a lot of things that don't need a lot of light. But it's quite a piece of art on its own. And I think that should be incorporated. I'm not sad to see the Chinese juniper go. I think they're really interesting-looking trees, but they do hide the whole facade of the building for a good stretch there. And they also make the sidewalk really feel cramped and uncomfortable. So I would rather see something done. I think that, as Charlie said, if there's a four-foot planting strip along the curb, there's still going to be probably nine feet of sidewalk passable for people to walk and maybe even enough room for very narrow planters with some grasses at the bottom or some decorative grasses. I don't mind the idea of the trees being, the poplars being taken out and replanted because I think that the ones that are there were probably not planted in ideal conditions. And I think getting new trees in there that have actual soil to have root volumes that support the trees are going to, we're going to end up with larger and better-looking trees anyway. I'm happy with the signage over the roof. I think that it's a nice, I think it's clear, I think it's crisp, and it is not intrusive. I think the scale is okay. I'm not crazy about the logo. Somehow that logo just stylistically doesn't seem to go along with anything else that's going on in the building. And I'd like to see that relooked at if possible. So basically, the storage and the functional elements, I'd just really like to see thought out a little bit more. I know you've been thinking about it a lot and that there are a lot of constraints. But the functioning of the forum space and the functional impact of having offsite storage, I think there's things that really need to be looked at carefully.
Thank you, Commissioner Donaldson. All right, moving on, we have Commissioner Keller.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, the city staff for doing a good job. And I think there's nothing about this particular rendition of this that I don't like. I think you guys have done a very good job. But first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Donaldson for her input on the landscaping, exactly things I've been concerned about. I think your green wall, I see many, many places around here that have beautiful architectural renditions of waterfalls and plants coming down, cascading walls. I'm certainly looking at the Port Street garage right now that had these beautiful, you know, renditions of plants coming four stories. And we're not seeing that. So I'm very concerned about those walls just being box-wired and never seeing any plants on that. So I ask that you listen to Commissioner Donaldson and look at a plant pile that is going to grow and fill those walls and make those true green walls. I particularly like the logo. I like it, I think it's very creative with the E kind of reversed. I like the exclamation point in the middle. I think it's eye-popping attractive, so I don't mind that. Like I said, the signs, it'll be the place, I'm fine with that as well. The materials, the replacement with black cord, I think is appropriate. I think what they're actually, doesn't look good. It doesn't look as good as the, like, we're saving, it's obviously very different. So I think that is a good thing, we can go ahead and move that. I like the visibility of the parking, the bike parking at the entry and at the city hall area where the bike walkers are put. I think they're in a very prominent area where people passing by are going to be able to kind of hopefully deter people from doing anything to bikes that are parked there. I also agree with Commissioner Donaldson on the trees. The Chinese junipers are really overgrown for that space. They're architecturally beautiful, but they're just kind of the outgrown space that they're in. The trees in the parking lot are, have been there for a very long time. They're not doing very well. I think if we get new trees planted and some diggered soil, we're definitely going to have trees in a number of years that look better, in a short number of years that look better than the trees that we have there. So that said, for the Hollis Street side, I definitely would like to see something that buffers the pedestrians from the streets. So I'm definitely liking the idea of some kind of planting along the street with pedestrians on the inside of that. I do like the vision of the concrete planters up here at the cafe. I think that gives us a better sense of security, seeing something concrete there. Also, I think they're kind of structural. But whatever we do, I think the burner needs to be on the street side. And the pedestrian zone needs to be as wide as we can provide it. I know that's a very constrained area. Let's see. The cafe, you know, we're in unusual times right now, as we all know. I'm hoping that the social distancing thing, as soon as we get some kind of vaccine, is going to be hopefully a thing of the past. I can't imagine our society living six feet apart forever. But if that is the case, I would think you might need a little bit of washroom footage in a cafe so you can still put tables and allow for the social distancing. So understanding the cost imperative, et cetera. I really, I like how the cafe meets the linear front of the building. So I think reducing that could be a little problematic. I hope it stays as it is and that we can get away around this whole social distancing thing currently. Regarding storage, I understand the importance and the problematic creation of this. But within, working within a building of this size, do we want to provide space for artists? Or do you want to provide space for storage? So I see there's a fairly large studio in the center-right off of the, the gender-inclusive bathroom that seems fairly large. You could convert that to the storage pretty easily. But then you lose space for an artist. So to me, it's like, do you want to store things? It's like, I live personally. Do I want to store things or do I want to live in spaces? So it's a balance. And I think providing spaces, especially portable spaces for artists, is far more important. If you can find storage offsite, yeah, it's not convenient. But the whole idea here is to promote artists and not storage of materials. So for me, I don't think that's as big of a deal. Can I just sneak on the gender-inclusive restroom? So to let people understand, at UC Berkeley, we convert a lot of restrooms, especially in Buena Hola, which is a major classroom building, into gender-inclusive. And I've had the kind of joy of watching, I've kind of stood by and watched people how they use the bathroom. And it's amazing to me how once people are used to it, they just walk right in. I've seen men coming out of the room while young women are going in. You don't give each other a second look. They don't like, oh my God, am I in the wrong space? Once it's established, it's pretty comfortable. I've seen people adapting very well to it. I'm glad to hear that they're totally enclosed partitions. We did have some instances in our early, our early renditions of people putting cell phones under gaps in doors and stuff with their cameras. So I think it's imperative for comfort, particularly of women, that the stalls are completely enclosed, knowing, you know, venture up in their stall. I think that's a very good idea. I think the display space is, for the arts, is as good as we're going to get for a space like this. The jewel box is just amazing. I think, I see that black corrugated steel place and I just keep thinking, oh my God, someday that's going to be glass, it's going to be beautiful. So I'm really excited. And just may you guys come back and you can give us some more information as been asked by the commission. I think that will be helpful and more beneficial for us to be better actually and hopefully improve on, on the way forward. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. At this point, we'll continue on with Commissioner Mendez.
Yes. Thank you so much for the presentation. I really do appreciate the whole concept of inviting the public to come and kind of peek into the building. That, for me, that really excites me. And I encourage you to maybe consider enhancing that by bringing, for example, maybe bringing some paths through the landscape from the public street closer to what the jewel box is and where the art is going to be displayed so that, so that the pedestrian passing by is encouraged to get closer to the building and peek in there and feel like they can do that. I feel like that would really engage the public a lot better and encourage them and make them feel like they can look in there instead of them having to kind of trample through bushes. So that's one comment that I have. Another comment is the outdoor cafe area. I would like to see that a little bit more developed. I would like to see that a little bit more developed. It's, it's kind of, for me right now, it's not as exciting. An outdoor space is a community space and a gathering space, and I think we should pay as much attention to that space as well as the interior. So kind of, I would like to see a little bit more detail on that. And I do agree with Commissioner Donaldson on the green wall as far as the recommendations that she made. Another point that I kind of would like to make is the entrances were a little underwhelming there. It took me a minute to kind of understand where the main entrance was. If it wasn't for the signage, I wouldn't have known that the main entrance was by the café. So I would like to see maybe that a little bit more developed, maybe a change in scale or material or just something that really, really encourages the public to come in and enter through there. And another point is that I did notice that there were some material choices that were used on the east side entrance, wood and the black metal, but they weren't used anywhere else in the building. So I would encourage you to maybe have cohesion in the materials that are used as a, maybe a wayfinding for, for where these entrances are and to invite the public to come in. Other than that, I think those are the main points that I kind of wanted to make, and I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendez. We'll continue on with Commissioner Yon.
Hello there. Okay, so in some sense, I really like the overall development of the project and how it's moving forward. I think it's a nice thing and quite a, quite a neat place for Emeryville to have and a really great alternative for the various artists that are in Emeryville. I thought in terms of, in terms of the building massings, I kind of thought it was kind of nice, and I know we're, we're with what we have. That watchman room that's on that upper floor, it may or may not, and I don't know if you looked into it, if that could be a place that might be a form of what could be accented up there. I felt that the building itself is trying to be minimalist and industrial level. There's a lot of mixed languages with the green wall going on one side. Okay, if it ties around the building, maybe think about that. I think it's, but I think overall, it's pretty smart. In sense of the café, I'd like to see some kind of kiosk or something, maybe bring some of the gallery to that gallery, I mean, to that café in one sense or another. I don't know if windows at the door, studio doors have been thought of, like putting windows in those doors, not necessarily in the walls, and then having the residents in those spaces, those leasers in the spaces have an opportunity to blind them out if they don't want to be seen, but it allows them to have a choice of having it being open. I'd like to see a couple of the studio rooms that are adjacent to each other to be truly partitioned walls between them so that it's, it is easy, maybe there's, there's maybe a, a choice of two or four rooms that could be made into larger rooms by a partition that would be easy to take down and move that way. I would like to see a sink in that multipurpose room. In terms of the trees, oh, oh, and in terms of, in terms of storage, I, I also feel there's a little lack of storage, but there's ways to, there's ways to come up with what they do. One thing that I've learned from the various events that they have here in Emeryville is that these walls that they use to hang pieces on are, they take a lot of space. I mean, it's, it's actually amazing how much partition wall it takes to actually hang art. And I think it's something you guys have thought of, maybe, maybe one section of wall could be a storage for flat partitions on one side, maybe that's the wall that shares between the, and it kind of shrink the room down a little bit, but if it, if it works out in one way or another, it would be a great place to kind of hide large panels that I think these artists and these persons who set this art might, might need. I, I really like to see a sink in the multipurpose room. I'm, I'm not sure why, but I feel that for whatever reason, it, it offers some options. I, I'm kind of going for the new trees, the, the, the trees that are there also. I have a feel are, they're kind of past their lifetime and they're kind, they're kind of cool, but I don't, I don't, I'm not totally in love with them. And I like the idea to swap the parking, to deal with the diagonal parking. I think that allows more use with it. In terms of the outside area in front of the café, it'd be nice to have more of a permanent-looking seating area out there. I mean, throw some furniture out there is one thing, but it's, it'd be nice if it's, if there's some highly usable nodes or something in some sense, maybe that's an opportunity for a very large, heavy piece of art to go there, something made of concrete from, you know, or something very, very heavy that could fit or metal or something. And I have a very hard time with that logo as well. I think it, I think it doesn't really, it, it, to me, it just doesn't really read that well. And those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Yon. Vice Chair Thompson?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thank you, David, thank you, Maru. Great presentations. And Maru, do you have a slide that tells us what we're supposed to be commenting on? I know we often put that up, and I noticed there wasn't one up right now.
Yes.
If you don't, I will just keep going.
Why don't you keep going and maybe sharing and pull up the last slide of my presentation? Or the show?
Okay, great, thanks. And yeah, so, so comments overall, I mean, it's a fabulous project. I mean, I think that, I think I want to encourage the team to, you know, keep making it better and better. You know, this is a unique opportunity, this is a unique location, the, the idea of preserving something and trying to do this in an economic setting, those are hard things to do, so I want to encourage the team to keep doing them. And, but I would also say that in terms of really making, you know, figuring out the detail, being able to communicate that, making sure that it's consistent with Emeryville's priorities, I would say that is, that is critical to the success of the project. So I think in terms of just the changes to the buildings, to the building itself, I think that the material change, I, the way that it's positioned, I think is good. I see the, it against the preservation part and the fact that it contrasts with that, I have no problem with. The green wall, I too have concerns about how wonderful it could be versus what it will be. And so having that really understood and being able to thrive in, in the northern location and having the right species and understanding how long it will take for it to be full and bushy, that will be important. But the idea of the green wall in that location, I have no problem with. In terms of the, the sidewalk too, and the tree placement, so in, you know, in this, in this time of uncertainty, I want to be a little bit cautious with the landscaping because too often, things get taken down and then everything stops, and then we have nothing. So I want to encourage, yes, I, I too think that there should be helpful landscaping and things that are past their maturity, you know, are not, not important to preserve, but really thinking that out in terms of, Emeryville has been very clear about no taking of trees and wanting to preserve landscaping because it is full growth, it takes time to get back to that growth, there are costs associated with replacing, and sometimes the vegetation doesn't thrive. And so, so I want to understand all of those details before really saying, go ahead, it's a quick replacement idea. So, but I do think in general, the priority on Hollis Street as being a, an attractive pedestrian environment, that really needs to be an attractive pedestrian environment that, that, you know, accompanies this great project. So I would, I would support that, and you've heard my comments about really just tying it into the city priorities. So I think the, the only other point I wanted to make was in terms of really trying to make all the pieces work and complement each other and be sort of a celebration, as much as the project is a celebration. Times are uncertain, I brought that up, but I think in terms of thinking about what it could be and how it could be special and how some conditions are temporary and some are long-term, I think the priority should really be on making great spaces. I don't think that necessarily is, you know, is necessarily means a smaller café. I think there, there are arguments to say it's larger, but we need the full argument in terms of what the dynamics are at the time when the decisions are being made. So we know it's going to unfold, but I'd say just, just keep, keep that information at the front of the presentations in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thompson. Are there any other further comments at this point from the commissioners before I continue with mine? No? All right. So I'm going to go ahead and address the three points, the first one being the design. I, I really appreciate the presentation, so I want to start with that. I think it looks great. You, you all did a great job in terms of hearing our feedback and coming back to make some adjustments to, to address those, so I appreciate that. And I think the design looks, it's heading in the right direction. The east side, I like the, the steel wall, and I think that it, the part that I was most excited about was the contrast with the wood underneath the entrance there. And so I agree with Commissioner Mendez, finding a way to incorporate different materials like that wood throughout the, and some other parts of the building might be something I recommend. It feels like a big block of, like steel on the east side, and I'm wondering if that could be broken up a bit with a different type of material, maybe different color, I'm not sure. But I do enjoy the, the steel contrast there. The, the sign, I, I do enjoy the signs on the east side and the, actually, on the west side and the, the 40th street side that say the Art Center. I like how it's protruding up from the building for it to be more prominent. I'm wondering if, if the color is one that was chosen to blend in with the sky or if we would want to contrast that with a different color. And so in my terms, I think a contrast might be a great way to get that to pop a little bit more, so I'm thinking of colors that might contrast with the blue sky, maybe a pomegranate color, a burnt orange color, something in that direction that might give it more, more contrast. But I do enjoy the, how it stands above, not on the building itself. I'm in agreement with some of the commissioners about the logo. Not, it doesn't really resonate with me in the entrance there. I'm, I'm wondering maybe if that logo could be partnered with Emeryville Center for the Arts in a smaller font beneath it or above it, so maybe to emphasize what that logo is and make a better connection, because right now, maybe it's just that I don't have a strong connection to that logo yet, but it, it did feel a little sparse in that entryway. The, on the trees in the front on Hollis, I, I also agree that those, those trees aren't as appealing for the front entrance and would recommend the removal of those trees from the Hollis side, in addition to the trees in, in the parking lot. Now, I love trees, but there's one that really bothered me when I looked at some of the, the illustrations, and it was the one on 40th Street. There's one that's right in front of the jewel box, and that tree, I think, is taken away from the jewel box. It's one, the one that's on the most eastern tree on 40th there, and I just think that might be another tree that we want to replace, put somewhere else or remove in, in order to really let that corner shine. And it actually covers the, the sign as well. The center, you look at the illustration, center was covered by that tree. And so just concerned about that one too. In terms of other pieces of feedback, I am genuinely interested in finding ways to make some of these units available for low-income artists. And so I think that's, that's some questions that I have for staff, like are there resources and programs available for artists to be able to use to, to get a, a studio like that? If there are, that's great. I want to make sure that artists know how to access those resources. If not, I really want to incorporate and designate some of these units and artists' studios to be for affordable studios, spaces, whatever way that looks like. Maru, did you, did somebody jump in here?
That was me, Commissioner Guerrero, Andrea, Assistant City Attorney. Can you hear me?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So with respect to any sort of income restriction on the spaces, that relates, that's not really within the purview of the planning commission, and we don't have any ordinances or regulations that relate to that sort of program, and so that would be within the city council's purview in terms of its negotiation with ODI over the LDVA and the Ultimate Groundlings.
Great. And at this point, I'd really just like that to be a part of the conversation, and so I'd appreciate some feedback from council on that as well.
Your, your comment is noted. When the, when the project does come back for approval, the planning commission's purview over the LDVA will be to render a, what's called a general plan conformity. So at that point, the commission can make a comment if it would like to the council about that.
Great, thank you, Andrea.
Sure, thank you.
Looking at my notes here just to make sure I captured everything. The jewel box, I, I'm a little distracted by the, the brick behind the, the glass. I think it's, it's cool that you, you carried that on through, but when I think about looking at art and appreciating it, a brick wall really takes away from me appreciating that art. And so I'm thinking of the inside of that specific space being maybe something like a gray palette, maybe like a, a different, more of a neutral color as opposed to the brick facade, because I think that it might attract more attention to the art that would, that's been displayed in that jewel box. And so that's my feedback about the jewel box at this point. I think that's it. Ah, yoga, the yoga studio. David, you mentioned that yoga may be something that's incorporated in some of the programming here, and so just thinking about the only shower in the, the whole space being in, in the green room, and maybe that yoga studio or being closer to that space, if that would be a, a shower that would be able to be used by people that are wanting to shower before or after class like that, maybe dancing as well. And so just thinking about the placement of those, that the dance or yoga studio with closer accessibility to the shower room, you know. Those are all my comments right now. I think that this, I'm really excited about the project, I think it looks great. There's some, some small adjustments that to be made here, but overall, I'm, I'm interested in, in seeing this continue on. Were there any other further comments from commissioners before we open? Yep? No? Okay. So at this point, want to circle back with the applicant and, and city staff and see if there's any clarification or questions that you might have for the commissioners? None? All right. I think we're ready to move on. So we'll continue on to item, eh, where's my jumper?
At seven point two, the St. Samuel's Beautiful Apartments.
Thank you, Charlie.
You go.
So I'm going to continue when I, when I find my agenda. I want to invite Navarre to go ahead and begin to pitch.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello, Commissioner?
You're, you're a little soft, Navarre. We can't, I can't hear you too well.
Don't know how to fix that. Hold on just a moment. Does that help?
Little bit, yeah.
Got to know. Yes, now.
I think that, go ahead Navarre and then if we're having troubles hearing you, then we'll just.
Let me do, switch it to my desktop if that will be better.
Okay.
How about now?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, well, we'll do that, turn off my Bluetooth here.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, good evening commissioners. I will be presenting on the San Pablo Affordable Apartment Project this evening at 3600 San Pablo Avenue. The applicants are also attending the meeting this evening and have a separate presentation after this one. They will be focusing more on the affordability of the project and the design of the projects. If you have questions about those aspects, particularly the design of the project, those are all the questions that would be best directed towards the applicant after their presentation. Next slide. So here is the site location here. 37th Street is on the north side of the project, 36th is on the south side. You can see the freeway just south of that. And then San Pablo is on the main project, frontage on the west side. Next slide please. And here are the current conditions, at the top we have San Pablo Avenue, this is home to Ecap and also Golden Gate Locking Key and the former Doug's Barbecue on the corner of 36th. And then as you can see from the lower picture, there is a Y intersection with traffic coming off the freeway and lots of pedestrian traffic as well up and down San Pablo Avenue. So next slide please. And here's a little eye candy for you to get a picture at the front. This is going to be a text-heavy presentation, much more than usual, so I want to make sure that you got a rendering right at the beginning of the proposed building. This is a view from 37th and San Pablo facing south and you can see the freeway elevating in the background. Next slide please. So for project background, the city unsuccessfully tried to acquire this property for affordable housing for several years and there was actually a planning commission study session, a city council study session back in 2017. And both the council and commissioner were supportive of having housing here, particularly for formerly homeless individuals and for also keeping Ecap at this location. The property was foreclosed after some time and was obtained by the nonprofit affordable housing developer, RCD. Next slide. So RCD owns Bay Bridge Apartments adjacent to the project side on the east side of the property as well as Ambassador and Triangle Courts. So they are familiar with the area and have projects existing in Emeryville. In November 2019, city council approved a pre-development loan agreement and housing agreement to provide $2 million towards RCD's site acquisition for this location. Next slide please. So this application is being applied for under SB 35, which mandates ministerial approval, we're going to talk about that more, and AB 1763, which specifies no density limits for projects, for affordable housing projects, that is, within one-half mile of transit. And normally this precludes any planning commission or city council review. But, next slide please. Per the review and approval under the pre-development loan agreement with the city as part of that $2 million loan, there is required to be one community meeting that is going to be held in a teleconference later in the month, two planning commission study sessions, one city council study session, and the requires developer to make a good faith effort to address community concerns and comments. Next slide please. So what is SB 35? Now, the staff report you have is much more in-depth, so I'm kind of glossing over things because there's a lot of details. But I did want to cover the basics here this evening. So it was passed by the state legislature in 2017 to address housing shortages and costs and requires streamlined ministerial approval process for developments in localities that have not made sufficient progress towards meeting the arena or the regional housing needs allocation. Emeryville is one of those cities and therefore is subject to SB 35. Next slide please. So what does this ministerial mean? It means there cannot be judgment involved, there are no findings and no conditions of approval may be imposed. So all analysis is yes or no. So if you think of something like, write that with the analysis, it's okay. If the project complies with those standards, it can be approved. If it does not comply, it's not approved. Next slide please. So for Emeryville, our process for ministerial project review is zoning compliance review. So this is how projects like ADUs, accessory dwelling units, which are also ministerial, are reviewed and approved. So for these procedures, you need to determine, the determination by the director is if the proposal conforms to the requirements of the planning regulations. And if the director determines the proposal does not conform, then they need to inform the applicant of what needs to be corrected so that it can be brought into compliance. So this is a community development director and not a planning commission, that's the decision on ministerial approval. Next slide please. So for SB 35 and design review, what does this mean for designer view? The development project may be subject only to objective designer view standards. So an objective designer view standard means a standard that involves no personal or subjective judgment. So again, it has to be yes or no. Therefore, designer view under SB 35 is ministerial and subject to the zoning compliance review process. Next slide please. So most of the city's designer view guidelines and criteria are subjective, so they require some degree of personal judgment and therefore cannot be involved in this process. So staff is attempting to identify those designer view criteria contained in the Emeryville Design Guidelines and other documents that can be considered objective designer view standards. And will apply those to the project as part of the zoning compliance review project, or process rather. Next slide. The applicant has also said that they're going to provide an objective standards table, which will evaluate every, every standard to decide if it meets the objective criteria of SB 35 and demonstrate how the proposed project conforms with any applicable standards. So that's not prepared this evening, that's a very large task, that will be coming to you later. Staff has identified the basic development standards that would apply to the project and those for which waivers may be necessary as part of this report. Next slide please. So developments eligible for approval pursuant to SB 35 must be on land zone for residential use, which this is. Does mean at least 10% of the units is below market rate, which this does. And does mean at least 50% of units is below market rates in localities that have not met their low-income rent requirements, which Emeryville classifies as that. It cannot be constructed in an ecologically protected area, that's very difficult to say for some reason. And must be multi-unit housing and construction workers must be paid prevailing wages. Next slide please. So a development project proposed under SB 35 may include up to one-third non-residential square footage. And both residential and non-residential components of a qualified mixed-use development are eligible for the ministerial approval process. So additional permitting requirements, if there was like an ABC license or something required, are subject to local government processes. But Ecap, which is going to be on the ground floor of this, is not subject to any additional permitting requirements and is therefore included in the ministerial approval process for the project. Next slide please. And so what is this AB 1763? That is the super-density bonus law that was passed by the state legislature in 2019. So this modified the density bonus law to add provisions for additional, additional density increases to projects in which 100% of the total units exclusive of the manager's unit are extremely low-income, very low-income, under low-income. Except that there is an exception for 20% of the moderate-rate households. Next slide please. So for projects that are within a half-mile of major transit stop, which is anywhere in Emeryville, and projects that are, yeah, yeah, and for projects that are located within one-half mile of major transit stop and high-traffic corridor, which is anywhere in Emeryville, those projects cannot have any maximum density imposed on them. So when we have our bonus guidelines where you can have a base and a maximum, there is no maximum density in this case. And as for height, similar, it can go 33 feet over the base height. The applicant may also request an unlimited number of waivers of development standards that will have the effect of physically precluding the construction of development meeting the criteria of the state density bonus law. Next slide please. So incentive or concession versus waiver, it's kind of confusing, right? An incentive or concession focuses on cost, it will make the project cost prohibitive. And then a waiver focused on physical limitations that would make it feasible to maximize the housing development potential of the site. Next slide please. So for project overview, the project is to demolish all the existing structures on the three parcels, which are just over a third of an acre, and construct one seven-story building with approximately 90 affordable residential units plus one manager's unit. A minimum of 3,600 square feet of commercial space for Ecap, and up to 5,000 square feet for that. And up to 42 vehicular parking spaces, which would be mechanical stacks and would require 90 long-term and five short-term bike parking spaces. The project also includes stormwater treatment off-site, but for the project adjacent along 36th Street. Next slide please. Alright, so we made it through a lot of text, thank you for your patience, now we get to look at some pictures again. So here is the project site, you can see it, this is from south, looking across the freeway, Arioli, and you can see the recently completed Estrella Vista project is across the street from this proposed project site. Next slide please. So here is the proposed first-floor plan. Along the frontage of San Pablo Avenue is the lease space for Ecap. Along 36th Street are the entrances to the building, the elevators, and lobby and office space. And then along 37th Street are some serviced delivery entrances and parking entrances. Next slide please. So the proposed podium level creates a much higher ceiling space for the retail, so that will be open. And then creates a mezzanine level along 36th Street to provide for bike storage and two-bedroom manager unit and some maintenance areas. Next slide please. So this is the first level over the podium floor plan and you can see there is a courtyard on the east side of the property and wrapped around that are the units. Next slide please. And then the rest of the levels, two to five above that, are all the exact same floor plan with more units wrapped around the courtyard area. Next slide please. And here is a cross-section of that building, so you can again see the retail along San Pablo frontage, which would be on the left side of your screen. Residential units above that and then parking on the east side there that's on the interior of the building and stacked parking units. Next slide please. And here's another view, so you can kind of get that idea of residential units stacked above commercial. Next slide please. And here's the view from 37th Street facing towards San Pablo from an aerial perspective. You can see again the courtyard on the east side of the building and the residential units wrapped around that. Next slide please. So here is the basic site plan for the area and it kind of focuses on the sidewalk area and what's going on here. So it shows the existing streetlights, there's a bus stop towards the north end of San Pablo, towards the corner there of 37th Street. Next slide please. The red square shows where there's proposed loading zone that would be on-street. This is typically required within buildings, but for this project, they're proposing it to be on-street as an easier access point for Ecap and to not provide conflicts with vehicles for the residential spaces that would be going in and out of the garage. The garage door area, you can see with the red arrows, going in and out of the building on 37th Street just east of the loading zone. Next slide please. And this is the proposed stormwater area that I mentioned earlier along 36th Street. Right now, as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of traffic on 36th and staff thought it would be a good idea to maybe propose a bit of a buffer for pedestrians going up and down the sidewalk there and the applicant agreed. So the idea is to, instead of having the stormwater treatment that's typically required on-site, to have it directly adjacent to the building to help provide a bit of a buffer there. What's there right now is a driveway entrance and a couple of on-street parking spaces. So those would be removed and replaced with this planter area. Next slide please. And for a better idea of that, if you look at the left image, that's the current aerial and there, as I mentioned, there's a garage entrance and a couple, or rather, a parking lot entrance and a couple of parking spaces. And the green area in the center images shows roughly where the proposed landscaping would go over that area. And then the rightmost image shows how that is incorporated in the site plan and how the sidewalk would be widened a little bit around that to accommodate for that and provide a better pedestrian experience. Next slide please. So here's a rendering from 36th Street under the overpass, looking towards the building. Next slide please. And here are some of the design concepts that the applicant will discuss a little bit more later. And this is from 37th Street on San Pablo Avenue, looking south. Next slide please. And this is as if you were across the street, looking at the building towards the corner of 36th. Next slide please. And then here's what the building would look like from the freeway. So this would be from I-580 if you were driving towards Highway 24, what you would see. Next slide please. So for general plan and zoning, this is a mixed-use residential south area. Sorry, I should say south there, there's a neighborhood retail overlay and also pedestrian priority zone for zoning district. For a pedestrian priority zone, it's consistent with the intent of that zone. And for the neighborhood retail overlay, it's consistent with the intent of that zone as well, except the sidewalk dimensions are a little bit different than what's proposed, so a waiver would be required for that. This is also, there's a San Pablo urban design plan for this area, which dictates tree requirements, spacing, and types. And those sorts of details are not yet provided and will also be subjected to review of street lighting. So the amount of trees that can go into this location are dependent on how much street lighting is also available and Public Works is working with the applicant on that. Next slide please. So for floor area ratio, I don't know what a ratio is, that's a typo, my apologies. The base FAR at this location is 1.5 and what's being proposed is 4.9 FARs. So a waiver is requested for this. And as I mentioned, there is no maximum because of the density bonus law. The building height, the base for Emeryville regulations is 40 feet and the applicant gets extra 33 feet per bonus for 100% affordable housing at the site and they are anticipating taking full advantage of that for residential density. Again, there's unlimited density for 100% affordable housing projects. The base under Emeryville regulations is 50 dwelling units per acre. What's proposed is 240 units dwelling, 240 dwelling units per acre. And as I mentioned, development bonuses are not applicable to SB 35 and AB 1763 projects. Next slide please. So for an overview of units, Emeryville has a required unit mix, which you can see here. This application does not comply with Emeryville requirement for unit mix. There is an exemption from unit mix requirements in our code for a demonstrated need for a housing type as this is providing affordable housing, which is needed. This could fall under that exemption, which is actually not applicable for the ministerial approval because it requires city council approval for that, so a waiver is requested instead. Next slide please. So there is no setbacks required at this location. There is an open space requirement for common open space and private open space. The applicant is proposing far less open space than is required by Emeryville regulations, so they're requesting a waiver for that. And for landscaping, it's unclear how much landscaping is being proposed at this time, but 10% of the site area is required. So if 10% is not being required, then a waiver will need to be requested for that as well. Next slide please. So courts, there is a minimum dimensions for court standards and the proposed court does not likely meet those minimum dimensional requirements. So that will either need to be revised or waiver of the court requirements under the state density bonus law will be necessary. Next slide please. So vehicular parking, 72 spaces are the estimated demand at this location for 90 units in the retail space. But as you, I believe are familiar, the city council recently passed that there are no parking minimums, so that's not a parking requirement anymore, it's just estimated demand is informational. The applicant is currently proposing 42. The applicant is currently proposing forty-two spaces in those stacked parking units that we discussed. It will need a little bit of modification to meet the new EV, electrical vehicle charging requirements and also accessible space requirements. Three accessible spaces are required for forty-two spaces. And they're only showing two right now, so there will need to be a little bit of modification to the proposed parking. Details on bicycle parking have not been provided yet, but the plans do show a designated area for long-term bike parking on the mezzanine. Well, there needs to be a minimum of ninety long-term spaces and five short-term spaces for the residential portion of the project. Next slide, please. For loading, loading is typically required onsite for projects with fifty to 149 units. The applicant is proposing, as I discussed earlier, when looking at the site plans, one on-street loading space along Thirty-seventh Street instead. This will be easier to facilitate on-street loading here than having to back up vehicles on Thirty-seventh Street, which is fairly narrow. Yes, and so that could either be processed as a modification under our code or of the waiver under the state and city bonus law. Next slide, please. So for public art, public art fees are only applicable for projects that are subject to discretionary design review, which this project does not, as we discussed. So there is not a public art requirement for this project. However, the site is considered a gateway site in the general plan. And the applicant states that in response, this project strives to highlight the city's thriving arts community in this gateway building. So the applicant will talk more about that in their presentation. Next slide. So environmental review, this project is exempt from environmental review under CEQA pursuant to statutory exemptions, which states that ministerial projects are exempt from the requirements of CEQA. Next slide, please. Staff reviewed this project at the April DCC meeting, and the plans have been changed significantly since that time to reflect the comments you see here. So for example, the applicant wasn't originally proposing to underground utility wires on Thirty-Sixth and Thirty-seventh Street. They're already undergrounded on San Pablo Avenue. Now, the applicant is showing those being undergrounded. Staff noted that parking could be reduced because of the elimination of parking minimums, and also electrical vehicle charging requirements might modify how the parking needs to be designed. Staff recommended follow-up with multiple departments to address considerations for building and fire discards, which is trash, compost, and recycling. A plan for that needs developed, and also make sure all environmental requirements are covered. There was more information requested on loading for ECAP, so that's based on Thirty-seventh Street. For example, how often would loading take place there? How large are the vehicles? Those sorts of things. And then it was also noted that stormwater treatment is required, and we've discussed how that has actually been addressed. The applicant has incorporated staff suggestion of providing what's called C3 stormwater treatment along Thirty-Sixth Street to provide a little bit of greenery and buffer for pedestrians along that busy street area. Next slide, please. So for your consideration tonight, does the commission have any feedback regarding the overall project? And does the commission have any feedback on the waivers of development standards requested by the applicant? I know this is the first time. We're looking at SB 35 applications, so you might have some questions about that as well. I'm available, as is Charlie Bryant, our director, and the applicant, to help you with those questions. And as a reminder, the applicant also has a presentation for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Navarre. So at this point, want to go ahead and open it up for questions from the commission to Navarre, if you have any? I'll begin with Commissioner Donaldson.
My only question, I guess, at this point is whether you're looking for any response in terms of the design. Because it seems like we don't have, we don't have actual ability to give direction.
Commissioner Donaldson, if I may address that. That is correct. I mean, under SB 35, we're really limited to determining whether the project complies with the city's objective standards. With that said, the commission is very good at identifying issues that sometimes we don't, we don't see when we're working through it. You know, for the example that I've given is, you know, the trash enclosure may be located one place, and you know, it's fine, but the commission may see that, oh, you know, if you tweak it a little bit here, then some residents is not going to have to look at the trash enclosure. So that sort of feedback is always very helpful from the commission. But ultimately, we don't have a whole lot of discretion over the project as you would with other projects. I hope that answers your question.
Yes. That was it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Geller, do you have any questions?
No questions for staff right now, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Mendez? Questions for staff?
I have, I just have one question. Is there any requirement for, for the units to have access to like an outdoor space other than the community outdoor space?
Yeah, typically, yes. The planning regulations have requirements for both private and common open spaces. However, in this case, this is one of the things that the applicant is requesting a waiver for.
Okay, that's clear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Young, do you have any questions for Navarre?
No questions, thank you, Navarre.
Vice Chair Thompson, any questions?
Yeah, I guess I wondered if you could just clarify in the positive of what we need to do, because this is a non-typical situation, and I know that's really what Commissioner Donaldson did ask. But can you just state in the positive what we need to do? And it was my understanding that there are two study sessions, and we don't, we don't really have a hearing, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's correct. So it's anticipated that based on community feedback, that includes you all, that there will be some modifications to the project. So the contract that they entered, that I've mentioned, where the city of Emeryville chipped into RCD acquiring this site, required these meetings to planning commission study sessions as well as a city council study session, and requires the applicant to take your comments into consideration, to take your feedback into consideration. So it's, it's not as hard-lined as your typical feedback, but it still provides an opportunity for dialogue and feedback on this process.
If I may, sorry. If I could just piggyback on that, Navarre, which is, to be clear, the planning commission here doesn't have any obligation. There's no obligation to make findings, to make a record. It really is the opportunity to help highlight the project for the commission and for the city council and for the public. But for the agreement with RCD with respect to the loans, there is no obligation to have any public meeting. But in Emeryville, we do like to go through our public process, and so that is why we are here in front of the commission tonight.
Thank you, Andrea. Commissioner, Vice Chair Thompson, have you had the opportunity to ask all the questions that you'd like to?
I have, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I, I don't have any questions for staff at this point. And would invite the applicant, if they have a presentation that they'd like to share with us. Is the applicant there?
Sorry, I was waiting for the, hello, this is Sarah. I'm waiting for the PowerPoint slide to pop up on the screen.
You got it. I think Sherry might be working on that in just a moment.
Okay.
There we go.
Nope, that's the wrong one. Sorry.
That is the end, oh. That was the end of the last of Navarre's presentation. Is there the RCD and RCDP video that will be popping up?
Sherry, are you there? If you are, you're on mute, and we can't hear you.
So we do have that, this is Navarre, we do have your presentation.
Yes, I'm navigating to it, sorry.
Okay.
I had it opened, and now it's disappeared, of course. My big moment.
Would this be a good time to take a recess, Sherry? Maybe for like three minutes?
If, yes, if you like. It'll only be a moment here.
Okay. I think that we'll hold out here. It looks like you might be pulling it up.
All right, can you see it?
Not yet. We see, we can see the, the screen that shows the folder that all the presentations are in.
How about that?
The Sherry screen, Sherry is showing all the images of the people that are in the meeting currently.
And you're not seeing the presentation now?
Not yet.
All right, maybe take three minutes. I apologize.
No problem, you got it. I'm going to go ahead and, and call recess at nine eleven, and we'll return back to the meeting at nine sixteen.
Thompson.
All right, Vice Chair Thompson. Commissioner Young, are you, are you back with us? Hey there, Commissioner Young? You're on mute still, if you are.
I am, I am.
Great, I'm sorry about that. Oh, thank you. And then Commissioner Donaldson, just confirming that you're back.
I'm here.
Excellent. All right. It's nine fifteen, but if, we have all the commissioners here, and Sarah, if you're back, then I think that we can.
I'm back.
Perfect. We'll get in recess here at nine fifteen, and we'll let you kick it off, Sarah.
Okay, sounds good. Hello, commissioners and all city staff. My name is Sarah Erickson, and I am a project manager at Resources for Community Development. We are pleased to share with you tonight a project that provides much-needed affordable housing, but also provides a new permanent home for the community's own Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program, ECAP. Let me introduce the team. RCD is the developer, and Henry and I are the project managers. LPAS is the architect, and we have Ron, Ryan, and Chris as part of our team. We have Bobby from ECAP, our nonprofit partner in the project. We also have Mark and Alex, who are consultants from the Roads Planning Group to assist us with the entitlement approval process. Next slide, please. RCD is a nonprofit affordable housing developer based out of Berkeley. Our mission statement and the work we do has a focus on improving the lives of the most vulnerable population, while at the same time building attractive, high-quality buildings and maintaining sustainable communities for our residents. Here are some staff on our portfolio. Most of our properties are in Alameda and Contra Costa counties, but we also have properties in Solano, Marin, and Santa Clara counties. Next slide. RCD builds and owns its apartment buildings for the long term. We pride ourselves on being good neighbors in the communities we build in and having a very strong operations team. RCD contracts with the John Stewart Company for property management of all of our buildings. We have an in-house resident services team, and we contract with third parties for clinical mental and behavioral health services. We also have a community development, development department, which focuses on the communities around our housing to cultivate community leaders and have a deeper impact on the quality of life, quality of lives of our residents. Next slide. Here are some of our communities, so you can see the quality of the design. We implement energy-efficient technologies in all of our buildings and have won awards for pushing the envelope in sustainability and green building. Next slide. These are examples of housing with formerly homeless populations, which is called supportive housing. Next slide. Here are some examples of properties with commercial spaces. Next slide. These are our three properties in Emeryville. Our properties often transform the neighborhoods they are in because of how attractive the buildings are and how well-managed they are. Next slide. John Stewart Company has been the property manager of all of our properties for nearly twenty years. JSCo manages over three hundred and seventy-five properties in total, including market-rate apartments, mixed-use, and affordable housing across the state. They are the largest private manager of supportive housing and special needs housing in California. Next slide. A services plan will get tailored for each property depending on the population types and needs of the residents. Our philosophy on providing services is that services are offered to all residents, not just formerly homeless. That way, there is no distinction or stigma between households. Services interact heavily with property management to maintain stable house. Next slide. Navarre touched on this. This is the exact location. There are three parcels. And we bought these sites in December of 2019 with the help of. with the help of the city of Emeryville and the $2 million loan. Next slide. We are working with ECAP to help them design a new and improved, more efficient space that brings their clients inside a retail area to obtain food. They will be the only tenants in the retail commercial space and ECAP will have a permanent home for the long term to continue the critical work they do providing food to low-income and homeless individuals. Next slide. This is our timeline for the project overall. We hope to receive entitlements by October of this year and then start applying for funding throughout 2021. The best-case scenario would be start construction in 2022 and finish to be fully leased up by the fall of 2024. I am now going to pass the mic to the LPAS architect team so they can walk you through our proposed designs. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you Sarah.
Yeah, thank you Sarah. This is Ron Metzger, Principal at LPAS and we're very happy to be here to discuss this project with you. Unlike the project that you reviewed just before, this one, we are just at the beginning of the design process. So you're seeing drawings that are very conceptual in terms of massing and they just, they start with ideas on how we are thinking about it and look forward to getting your feedback on that. So if we go to the next slide. And Navarre, of course, has done a fantastic job of presenting projects. So we'll go to the next slide after this. So the site along San Pablo Boulevard is the gateway to the city. What we've tried to do is create a project that fronts the Boulevard and helps continue the street wall that starts just to the north and continues down to the 580 freeway. Next. So as Sarah mentioned, ECAP is our major tenant. They take the entire frontage along San Pablo Boulevard. We have a 22-foot-high parapet or podium and so the space is high, it'll feel airy, it'll feel bright and I think it's gonna be a great space for them to use. That height also allows us to provide mechanized parking for residents behind there as well as a mezzanine level, which I'll get to in a minute. You can kind of see the shape of the site is very odd. It's a wedge shape and there's a lot of program that we're trying to get into here. So with ECAP taking the frontage along San Pablo, we are putting the resident entrance off of 36. I thought the city's recommendation of putting stormwater planters in front, taking out that driveway and two parking spaces really softens that edge right at the entrance. A lot of railing around that against additional safety, both for traffic and for pedestrians. Services and whatnot are coming off of 37th Street. We've tried to bring as many deep into the building, so like our trash rooms are internal to the building and so trash will be brought out on trash days for pickup. Things that we have to have, fronting along the street, such as our electrical room, fire pump, exits, and that sort of thing are on 37th Street. So if we go to the next slide. We go to the next one. So this is still within the podium concrete structure. This is the second level. What we did is we took the area along 36th Street and filled it in because we don't have room on the ground floor for bikes. We are putting 90 bicycle spaces in here. Actually, that's just for the residents. We'll have some long-term spaces also for retail, plus some long, space for long bikes, etc. We also have our maintenance area up here and the manager's unit on this level. We go to the next. Now we get above the concrete face of the building and we're in, we have five stories of type 3 wood frame construction. What you see in the cooler colors, the blue and purple, are residential units. The yellow are amenities. And so we have a courtyard, it's about 1,500 square feet, that is facing east and we've wrapped the courtyard with our resident services office, our homework, our learning center, community room, community laundry, restrooms, and that sort of thing. Next slide. When you go above that first level of the podium, then it is all residential wrapping around the building and anchoring the corners and then coming down both 36th and 37th Street. Next. This shows a section, you can see the height at 22 feet of the retail space, taking full advantage of that. Also a high-volume empty parking area, which allows us to get four high mechanized parking, again with a very small footprint, trying to maximize the parking. And I think that Navarre mentioned, you know, we are going to need to add some accessible parking, an additional accessible parking space or two, a combination for more electrical vehicle charging. And so the actual parking we provide may be a little bit less than that, but we were looking at what the most we could provide and we are showing 42 when we actually submitted this for your review. So, next. So Navarre, I think also showed that, so you can see how this fits in contact with EAH's building next door, continuing kind of that urban edge along San Pablo and then opening it up onto residential neighborhood behind. Next. And then you can see again from the east side, it is more permeable, open to the courtyard. We have our stair and elevator in the kind of tan area, which is adjacent to RCD's other affordable housing project next door. And then we have the residential units coming all the way back on 37th Street. Next. So the site plan here, we know we want to continue or need to continue the streetscape along San Pablo and so we've started to look at where existing streetlights are, where other existing elements are and where we can add trees and I saw the staff report that we needed to add a few more additional trees and so we'll work on refining that. You can start to see the landscape area along 36th Street and the entrance and then along 37th Street. We'll have streetside loading, a curb ramp to bring goods and services into ECAP. We are providing underground plans, so we're proposing underground transformers within our property. So we've nudged the building a little bit on 37th Street to accommodate that. And then we have our garage entrance. As Navarre mentioned, we will be undergrounding utilities on both 36th and 37th Streets when it comes to our property line. Next. So, you know, it's interesting that the project before us was the Emeryville Center for the Art. Now this being a gateway site, you know, when we looked at what makes Emeryville, Emeryville, but from our experience, one of the strongest things is the vibrant art culture that the city has. And so we thought, what a better place to highlight that than at this location. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan, who's our lead designer on this.
Thanks Ron, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So, yeah, so as Ron was saying, we really wanted to focus and highlight the art and add to the thriving community, so if you can go to the next slide. I think as Ron already mentioned, so these are some early concept sketches. So obviously there's no windows, so we have some images up there of what some of the fenestration might start to look like and highlighting basically just the overall shape. So we really wanted to focus on a building that was gonna work on multiple levels as you approach it. So both from a vehicle experience, from a pedestrian experience, and uniquely even from the freeway when you're going at high speeds or at low speeds considering traffic. So we wanted to make sure that it addressed all those different aspects. And given the uniqueness of the site as Ron mentioned, that has this nice acute angle, we thought, what better way to do that than to actually erode the corners around them and soften it a little bit and make it a little bit more interesting as you maneuver around it. So you go to the next slide. So we also wanted to really basically embolden the shape above the pedestrian level by making some large cars into it and some large gestures that are visible from further away and from a trans experience and really to highlight those with art. And we're looking at a couple of different ways of doing that, whether it's a muralist, whether we incorporate it with large color block paintings. We're exploring multiple avenues. But we wanted it to weave through the facade and have areas that the facade actually scanned over the art and then the art went back behind it and it snakes all around. So it creates this really interesting play with the overall massing. The next slide. So again, this is a closer look at how that art weaves its way through the larger expansive volume above the retail base. You can start to see that there's more detail obviously at the base and I think we're, in the next slide. Like this is the, that view from the freeway again. So just showing, you know, some of those large expansive moves and how impactful it is from that vehicle experience. Next slide. So this is starting to look at, you know, what it might look like with some fenestration patterns to it. And I think what we're looking for with the fenestration pattern is to keep it simple so that it really highlights the art and the materials above the base. And we're looking at some different configurations of the base. Right now we're looking at some concrete at the base with some carved punch openings for the retail. And then we also have this large band, recessed band, that separates the base from the top to really, really highlight the base middle top condition. And then we're utilizing some setbacks and the artwork at the top to create that top band. Next slide. So you can see a little bit more detail in the base of the location. Playing around with some different materials so that when you're up close to the building, it really has a different experience when you're on the street level. And then if you go to the next slide, we're also exploring some different color schemes and different materials and considering different impacts that the site conditions will have on the building, like dust and debris from the roadway and how can we make sure that the building looks great for extended time. So that concludes our presentation.
Thank you Ryan. Getting my video set up here, there we go. Alright, so that was a presentation from you all. And at this point, want to open it up for questions from the commission to the applicant. And I'm gonna begin again with Commissioner Donaldson.
Thank you, well, thank you, that was a very interesting presentation. And you've got some real interesting concepts for the art there. Looking at the unit mix, you do have some two- and three-bedroom units there. Are you expecting families to be living there or is, who do you expect your residents to be?
I can take that. Yes, we have, in the three-bedrooms, it's two per bedroom max. So, and there's minimum occupancy requirement, so one person could not live in a three-bedroom. So for the larger twos and threes, yes, we anticipate those will be families. So we've got 16 two-bedrooms and five three-bedrooms, but the bulk are the studios and the one-bedrooms. 25% of the units will be for formerly homeless and when we look at the coordinated entry system waitlist, the biggest demand is for individuals and couples. There's very little demand for twos and threes for formerly homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller, any questions for the applicant? I think you may be on mute, Commissioner Keller. There you go.
Thank you, I thought I unmuted. I just have one question regarding the bike parking. I don't see how that is accessed. Are you guys planning that bikes enter the building on the mezzanine level through the elevators? Will there be some kind of ramping system? I'm just kind of thinking of the large cargo bikes fitting in an elevator. So I was wondering, do you have any thoughts on how you're getting into that bike room yet?
Well, yes, that is interesting. The bike room is on the second floor of, on the mezzanine level, immediately opposite the elevator. So you do have to take the elevator up to that level. You know, when I was looking back through the coordinate and the, and Navarre's staff report and looking at the need for bike trailer parking or larger bikes, I think we need to look at the capacity of the elevator and potentially either enlarge the capacity of the elevator or potentially find, which is probably the easiest thing to do, is make sure that that can accommodate that. Otherwise we'd have to find space down below, which would actually eat an ECAP space.
Yeah, we don't want to do that, we don't want to do that. Yeah, you might consider just making one elevator a freight-style or a service elevator, make it a little bigger and leave the other one as a passenger side and maybe increase the cost. But yeah, that's still the question I have.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Mendez, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have one question. I noticed that you mentioned off of 36th Street, there is an area for water treatment. Are there any other sustainable elements incorporated into the building?
There will, yes, there will be. Again, I can't say what all of them are. We are anticipating this being a 100% electric building, electric building, so not relying on fossil fuels for heating and cooling. And so that has a big demand as well. The thermal, and so it'll also be, to offset the usage of that, we would typically look at photovoltaic to support that. Our thermal envelope will be very efficient to meet energy codes. Those are kind of standard things, you know. As we get into it, we need to look and see what other things we can do, but we're just not there yet.
Yeah, I was gonna agree with that. It's settled, happened in the schematic, in the design development phase after entitlements. And I want to say, all of our buildings are minimum gold, green point rated. I have another all-electric building in San Jose and it's 46% above Cal Green Code and it's platinum. So we'll, we'll be making those choices later.
Thank you. Do you have any further questions, Commissioner Mendez?
I don't, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Young, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. First question is, in terms of a laundry room, is it, is it just customary to make a laundry room rather than bringing laundry into each unit?
Yes, it is customary. I can't think of a single property that we have except for the manager's unit. Having that many different machines to repair and deal with maintenance, it's much more efficient to have it in one location.
I will also say that what we've tried to do in this, you know, rather than put the laundry in a basement or in some windowless area, we've put it on the podium and in an area that'll have glass looking out into the courtyard so that when you are doing your laundry, you can actually sit at a table, read a book, do a puzzle, play games, search with your neighbors, watch your kids out in the podium. We see it as kind of a social area as well, and so we've tried to highlight that.
Thank you, thank you Ron for bringing that, yeah, that's also like in all of our properties, it's a RCD spec to put the laundry room by the community space, by the community room and by the outdoor area so that, like what Ron just said, is so that kids can be playing and... Ron just said, is so that kids can be playing and moms and dads are doing the laundry and they're making it peaceful.
And my second question is that historically, or at least from your presentation, your groups of buildings are all pretty much craftsmen. And in this particular one, you've chosen to kind of pick some brutalist style, which I think is attractive, but can you, can you kind of touch on that?
Well, I think, I'll answer a little bit here. Perhaps the examples that we showed are maybe a little more traditional residential, but one of the first ones that Sarah showed, which was highlighting their company, is actually where their office is. And it's a multi-story brick building in downtown Berkeley with a big metal canopy top, so it's much more contemporary. I think there are, I think, speaking for RCD, kind of a variety in their portfolio more than what we may have highlighted.
Those are my questions.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, we use different architects for all of our projects and let the architect have their creativity in the context of the greater surroundings. So if you notice some similarities, it wasn't intentional. We don't have an intention to make our buildings look in a certain way, but to really adapt to the neighborhood.
Very nice. Thank you very much. Good presentation.
Vice Chair Thompson, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, it's a little bit unusual just because the review process is unusual, so I just wanted the applicant to clearly state the waivers and then why they think it's necessary for their project, just for clarity in the record. Sort of my question is why? What waivers are you asking for and why?
Well, maybe that's answered by Navarre. In her presentation, she had it. Either that or I can do that.
Well, I thought you could answer the why maybe better.
Okay. Why, there's several that we can talk about. One, in order to provide affordable housing on this site, which is very constrained in terms of its shape and location, there are a variety of waivers that are just inherently needed. Plus the fact that we are providing a new permanent home for Ecap, it makes it that much more challenging. So the ground floor mixed-use project takes up a lot of room for, with Ecap, and then we have parking in the back and then our entrance. So residential doesn't actually start until we're 22 feet high, once we're above the commercial area. And so if we have a 40-foot height limit, we would only be able to do a two-story building and there's no way to do a project like that. And so that's why we were asked for a waiver on height is in order to actually provide a affordable housing project that is viable and that also provides the retail space. Some of the waivers that were highlighted are still under review, like the courtyard and... The courtyard, well, I believe we can make the 50-foot height limit or 50-foot width in one direction. There are some criteria about from a living room window, you have to be able to go 10 feet in each direction, which is difficult when you are on a corner studio unit. So in order to, again, get units to wrap around a U-shaped building, that precludes that compliance, and so we would need a waiver there. Open space, with the number of units and the constraints of the site, there's just, it's really impossible to provide the amount of open space that would otherwise be allocated in a market rate project. Let's see, so those are a few. Again, on the loading phase, the amount of constraints we have on the ground floor in order to accommodate Ecap and get utilities, get entrance for parking, I don't know where that would go other than along the street side, plus it is more functional for Ecap and that's actually how they do it. I think those are some of the large ones. There's some other ones that... I'm not... I'm sure I have missed some because Navarre highlighted quite a few. So Navarre, maybe you can fill that, fill in. And I, well, actually, if Navarre could highlight them, I can help describe if you don't have an answer on the why.
Chair Guerrero?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? This is Charlie.
I can hear you, Charlie.
Okay. I can take a cut at this as well. I think there was a little bit of confusion about some of these, that whether they're waivers or, you know, whatever. Let me just clarify, the height is not a waiver. Under the, which one is it? AB 1763, I think, the super density bonus law. They are allowed to have up to 33 feet above the base height and they have that, so that's not a waiver. However, FAR, sure, FAR actually is a waiver. The FAR is not something that is allowed, but, I mean, it's not a bonus thing that you get under AB 1763. And as Navarre pointed out, the FAR at this site is 1.4 and they are, their project calks out to, what is it, 4.9, I think? And so that's far above the base FAR, so they do need a waiver from the FAR. Concerning the, let's see. Well, it was mentioned about redesigning the parking to provide the additional accessible space. They're actually, it's not clear to me whether that's a waiver or not. If they don't do that, that could be one potential waiver, but also I think it's under this AB 1763 that they are exempt from the city's parking regulations. So they probably don't need to provide that additional accessible space because of that. The courts were already mentioned, the loading was already mentioned, but landscaping, there may, it doesn't really appear that it's feasible to squeeze 10% of the site area as landscaping. Under our planning regulations, landscaping is defined as being implants or other, you know, similar treatment in the ground. So if it's on a podium, it doesn't count as landscaping. So 10% of the ground area of the site is supposed to be landscaped, which is about 1,600 square feet of the 16,000 square foot site. That doesn't appear to be feasible given this design, so they probably need a waiver from that. Those were the main ones that we highlighted in the staff report, in addition to the ones that were already mentioned. Oh, the unit mix, let me just, let me just underscore that. The unit mix is something that we believe this project definitely would qualify for an exemption from the unit mix because it is a special type of housing and we believe the findings for that could be made. However, as was previously discussed, SB 35 is a ministerial process, does not allow for discretionary findings or discretionary exemptions. So SB 35 precludes them taking advantage of that exemption for the unit mix, so therefore the unit mix would also have to be a waiver. Those are the main things, but maybe some others as we further analyze this project.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, thank you.
Vice Chair Thompson, do you have any questions based on that, those responses?
No, no, I just, yeah, I just wanted to get a sense of why for some of those. Great.
Okay. Are there any further questions from the commission at this point before I ask Mike? All right. I have one question for Ryan in regard to the design. Because this is a new process for us, I'm curious, from your, your view, what's most helpful for us as we provide feedback for you on design? What are, are there some specific elements that you would find helpful and useful to help steer you in a certain direction?
I think that, I mean, going through this process before on some other projects in the area, I find your feedback is always helpful and it always, it always may spark some other ideas. So I think any feedback that you would normally give would be helpful and to take into consideration.
Okay. Are there any particular areas in the building that you're finding like, that you're just like, you want a second opinion from us on?
I know that the Gateway Project, it does have a distinct purpose to sort of help identify the Emeryville brand. So if you guys see opportunities to maybe enhance that through whether it's signage or the specific type of art possibly, or, you know, any other ideas when it comes to incorporating the art into the project, I think that'd be very helpful.
Okay. Thank you. That's my only question at this point. So at this point, I want to go ahead and open it up for public comment for any members of the public that would like to speak on behalf of this item. Sherry, have we received any speakers request at this point?
I have received no electronic submissions and I don't see any raised hands in the Zoom room.
All right. We'll wait just a few moments here for any last comments, submissions. Have we had any submissions at this point, Sherry?
No, we have not.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment for this item and open it up for deliberation comments from the commission. I'm going to stick with the flow and go back to Commissioner Donaldson.
I am really, really happy to see this project going forward. It is obviously such a sorely needed thing to have more affordable housing and supportive housing and I'm glad that our community is stepping up and doing that. I don't have problems with any of the waivers except for, I'm a little bit concerned about the open space waiver. We've been very aggressive in pursuing unit mixes in a lot of our, in all of our multifamily developments, but I don't think that that's necessary here because it is a special type of housing. But if we are expecting to have families, this is a really harsh intersection and it's an area that has no parks anywhere near walking distance. So just some way to have some space or some amenities that a family could use if there are going to be families. And one of the things that I was looking at, I know it's not fitting in with your art concept right now, the way that you portray it, and I was really glad to see the windows on the building because I was confused about it, about the windows. Where there are indentations now shown on the buildings on the 37th Street side and San Pablo and the 36th Street side, if those indented areas had some kind of balconies, you would be providing some little bit of outdoor space for about, at least about a third of the units there. And apparently for all of the two-bedroom units, not for the three-bedroom unit, but if there's some way that that could be worked out, that there was some space that opened up a little bit and provided at least some access to the outside for people where it's likely that there will be somebody other than single adults, that would be really something that I would love to see. I think your art ideas are really interesting and I'm really looking forward to seeing how this project evolves. The other concern I have, the other thing that is really, maybe it's the right thing to do to expand that loading zone on 37th Street, Ecap is, Ecap has a number of vans that come and go and they need to collect their food and get the things distributed. So the loading for Ecap is a really basic thing that needs to be addressed and addressed well, but I'm excited to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue on to Commissioner Keller. And there you go.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for their work on this, for the staff, and I think you guys have really come up, I agree with Commissioner Donaldson, this is sorely needed. I don't have a problem with any waivers because what we're doing is providing not only affordable housing, but sustainable for people so they're not always on the move. I just wish that, and this has nothing to do with the development, I just wish we didn't have all our affordable housing in this corner of the city. It just seems like we've got four or five complexes that are all in this part of town. But this is one transit is, there's a grocery store and a drugstore in there, so it seems to be a devastation, so I would support that. I really appreciate that you're doing all you can to support and keep Ecap in the area. I think they do a fantastic job and it's definitely something, a need that was, it's never going to go away, at least not for a very long time. So I think it's important that they get a better space so they can better serve the community and people aren't waiting outside in the weather so often, so I think that's good. I like the building. I like the idea that your courtyard is open to the east side, so it's lower scale to the neighborhood and the houses out of there. I appreciate that. I didn't think about the niches and areas that Commissioner Donaldson suggested, that, you know, you could possibly put balconies in that area that protrude without, throughout those articulations, so it would provide even a little bit more building articulation and some space for people to grill or at least, you know, sit out and watch the sunset or something. So I think that, I know it's probably more expensive to your building to do that, but I think that's something that we might want to look at to expand that outdoor space. Because a death concern there is, I was looking at plans of the old earth and parks in that area are sorely missing. There's like nowhere for people to go and I just know having the park across the street here and seeing its popularity since they redid it, it's a need and it just exists in that corner of town, so I think that's kind of important. I would like to suggest that maybe put windows in the stairwells. It's been a proven and studied fact that people will use stairwells more often if they're daylighted and if they can see out, so I think they have opportunity to put corner windows or something in those stairwells. I like the second rendition that you're showing. I know this is very early, but I like the second rendition of the windows showing the different sizes. I just ask because these spaces are so small, open studios and one bedrooms, I could put as big a window as possible and so people don't feel kind of claustrophobic in that space. I like your art projects. I think that those are really good. I was thinking maybe, not the whole building, but maybe that corner element that looks out onto 580 could somehow be lightly illuminated. Maybe one of the other niches down San Pablo could be illuminated. I could see putting in maybe some sculptural, three-dimensional wall sculptures in there to kind of get some shadow and dimensions rather than just flat painting or something. So maybe not everywhere, but maybe do a mix of things like that. And I, I found the white structure, I understood it with the art elements and how it worked, I just found it rather large and imposing and I like, and I'm thankful to see you looking at other options. I didn't think about how dirty it's going to get being right out on San Pablo Avenue and up of 580 there. So I think looking at other finishes that keep the building clean, I think would be greatly appreciated and I know you guys need to keep your maintenance down. So I think currently that's all I have and I really appreciate your efforts and we'll hopefully get successful to get this built.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. We'll move on to Commissioner Mendez.
Hi, yes. I do have a few comments on the design. I also do appreciate that you're bringing the artwork into the building and actually incorporating it as the material in the building. I think that's a really smart way of doing it and not just applying something on the building, but it's actually going to be the building. So I really do appreciate that and encourage that to happen. I'm also a little worried about the open space. I myself live in an apartment complex and we each have our own private balcony and it's really nice to be able to open up my space. and it's really nice to be able to open up, um, my space to the balcony and have some of the outdoor natural light come in. Um, so if there is not, um, open spaces like that for each unit, I would highly encourage having larger windows that will allow much light to enter into the unit. Um, that would just make it, I think, much more enjoyable space, uh, for the people living there, the, in the community living there. Um, as far as the, uh, the lower portion of the building, um, I do appreciate how you incorporated the different materials on the bottom, uh, portion of the building and paid attention to the pedestrian experience. I think that's really important, um, to kind of break up the building and, and not have it be this large mass. Uh, so I would encourage you to further study that. Um, that last reneering that you showed really, um, was appealing to me. Um, and then as far as the different materiality of the building, I do also agree that, uh, maybe, uh, you should look into something that a little bit, that will, uh, that will , uh, last a little bit, uh, or that would wear a little better in that area, uh, but keeping it, uh, maybe simple, just so that the artwork on the building itself can really pop and that can be the main focal point of this, of this, uh, structure. Um, other than that, those were my only comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendez. Uh, we'll move on to Commissioner Young.
Hi, thank you very much. Well, I wanted to, uh, beautiful structure, uh, I want, I wanted to say that I really enjoyed the care that you had on the residential homes behind the structure. There's one house that's kind of in the center there and you utilized as much, uh, open space for them, so I thought that was very, very nice. Um, I thought that also, um, it'd be interesting to, in the main lobby where people will actually congregate and go up, I mean, it's a very community kind of oriented thing, so have some kind of awareness, working to kind of be able to use that. May not even change the building much, but maybe just in the form of, maybe in forms of how textures are being, uh, placed on flooring, walls, ceilings, stuff like that. Um, I'm very interested to see what the floor plans would, are gonna look like, would you guys kind of get into that a little bit more? Um, I think about the seating areas outside the building, maybe along the sidewalk, if there's some spaces there, there's opportunities for people to kind of hang out and chill, there's, uh, there's a, uh, possibility for that. I think about too, um, how you have the balcony windows could be inset deep into the building, uh, it'd still give a very industrial feel, within an opportunity to have a balcony set up there so that window itself acts as a, as a, as a balcony. Um, I also like the idea that just how much you're bringing ECOG into the situation where you get the building to, where the, where the ECOG can actually be part of a community and give it kind of a, a respectful, uh, situation that it's just not had in all these years, and I think that's fantastic. Um, I bring up a question on a roof garden. I know those are probably not something you want to do. I understand the issues with it, but maybe if there's a, maybe if it's smallish or something like that, it might be a place for people to kind of hang out. Um, I think about too, um, the curves on both sides for the front, for, on plan where you have the large curve, I think those are wonderful. I, I, I just, I, I really like how that's, uh, how that's thought out. I was very surprised to see that massing look like it does and it just really does fit that, that corner beautifully, it just fits it, and I think it's, I think it's special. Um, the, the art that is going on the, on those insats, I think could be really cool. Just, just remember that art is, uh, is something that grows and if, if, if it's extremely tasteful, it will be something that just gets better, even if it gets dirtier. And, um, I wanted to also say that, um, there's a possibility for, it, I, I'm not sure how much of the city work that you might be doing on the sidewalks, but it might be a opportunity to do something fun where you have insets on the sidewalks that might be kind of fun and interesting, even give a positive. But a very smart design, um, may, it's, it's very wonderful to see that corner being something else. Um, I, I, I will miss, I, I remember Doug's barbecue back in the day, it was fantastic. And so, um, I think it's just, this is a, a kind of a good gift in its own way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Vice Chair Thompson?
Sure, yeah, no, I, thank, thank you for the presentations. Um, you know, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners that this is a great project and that the, the need is, is there, um, and it's good to see action being taken and it's great that we as a community can be a host, uh, to, to have both Ecap as well as, um, additional units. So, uh, that being said, um, I did want to also, uh, just, uh, affirm some of the same comments saying, uh, you know, outdoor space is really important particularly because the climate is so wonderful here, um, and having access to it, whether it's by opening a window, um, or a balcony, or a roof deck that's shared, um, thinking about the most economical way and effective way for the population you're serving, um, gaining some open space access would be really important. Um, I think also just, uh, again, just having, uh, anything you can do that's, you know, really shows, uh, a richness of spirits, I think is really important, so the artwork, I think, fulfills that role. Um, it doesn't have to be costly, but it has to be, you know, exciting and engaging, um, and I think you're doing some of those things in the project, so I'd just encourage you to continue doing those things. So I think those are, those are my main comments, um, and, uh, you know, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thompson. Um, are there any other comments, um, that any commissioners would like to make? I see a hand up with Commissioner Donaldson. Go right ahead.
Yeah, no, I had a thought in looking at this idea about providing some kind of balconies, especially for the two and three bedrooms. Um, on the 37th Street side, you have three studios that don't have any balcony kind of access that could have nice windows if they were flipped to the other side, because I am concerned that the 36th Street side is the side that has the most traffic, the most exhaust and the most, uh, I, I've sat on that 580 freeway for years. It's not pretty, so I don't know whether that side is the best side to have anybody out spending time and breathing the air there, so if, if it's possible to flip the units that might be able to have balcony space to a space that was a little bit less, um, exposed to the freeway, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Donaldson. Any further comments at this point from the commission? No? All right, I'll jump in. Uh, first I want to, um, congratulations on purchasing the free sites, that's huge. Um, and, uh, really want to applaud the, the work that, that you all are doing, uh, to meet the needs of a community that's, uh, often underserved. Uh, so I just want to begin with that and say that I'm really proud of our city for, uh, working on a project like this, it, it's, it's a big deal. Uh, and makes me happy that we're part of this. In terms of design, you know, I, I, um, I, um, overall, I'm, I'm really pleased with what I've seen so far. Um, and, and so, um, the art being the gateway into our city, I think that makes a lot of sense. Uh, I love the, the, the cloud pop of colors, uh, that, that were used in the illustrations. It reminded me of the splatters of, of paint that we have under, underpass by IKEA. Um, and, and that's a lot, a lot of fun when people pass by that, even if it's not really intentionally art, it's, it's still some color that people enjoy seeing. And so I think that that, the building on the, the freeway side is gonna be able to, to create that same, uh, experience for people on the freeway. Uh, so love that. And, um, would encourage you to, um, continue in the direction that you are, um, already. I think that the, the, this, the artwork that you're showing us is exciting, uh, so I like that. Um, the, um, the rounded corners, I think that looks great and it's, it's a really nice, uh, design feature for the building. And, um, one of my favorite, um, buildings around that area is Ambassador, which is what, uh, an example of what you've shown for one of your properties. And so, um, I, I, I think that, um, in terms of, uh, meeting a, like a, a modern feel, uh, that is Emeryville, um, you're already in the right direction and, um, and it, it feels similar to, uh, the Ambassador, which is just a couple, like a block or two down. And, uh, the, the colors for the building, um, I, I agree with commissioners, like, not using a lot of color, so really emphasize the artwork would be the direction that I'd, I'd say, um, to go. Um, and lastly, in terms of the, the waivers, open space really is my largest concern for this. Uh, during this shelter in place, um, I, I don't have a balcony, I don't, I don't have, um, any of those, those features in my apartment and it's been really important for me to be able to enjoy the outdoor space in my courtyard, in my complex, as well as the park across the street. And so I, I, I want to emphasize the importance of those spaces for people's mental health and wellbeing. It, it's not something that we can not include because the space is limited, I think it's really important feature, uh, for people to enjoy where they live and, um, and, and to really, uh, get out and interact with each other in different ways. Um, and so, um, it, I, I think having more of a, uh, open space with the ideas that the commissioners, uh, presented, possible balconies, really enjoyed the idea, um, Commissioner Young of the, the roof deck. While it might be a cost restraint, I, I like that as a solution for, uh, reduced space in the design at this point. Uh, so that's my biggest concern with this project moving forward is really just outdoor space, and I think that echoes, uh, most of what the commissioners have said at this point. Uh, I don't have any other comment at this point in terms of, uh, uh, design and would invite any other commissioners to have a last word if you, if you have anything else to say. Oh, all right. Are there any questions that the applicant or staff have, um, to, for, further clarify some of the feedback that you received? Nope? All right.
No, yeah.
I hear somebody, oh, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say I don't have any, thank you, thank you for your feedback, really appreciate it, we're excited for this project.
Great. Thank you, sir.
And this is Charlie, I'd like to say something. Um, I, I really appreciate the thoughtful comment that the commission has had, I have to say, or has made, I have to say staff is, is, uh, like, this is the first time we've ever done an SB 35 project, a ministerial project, so, you know, we're kind of in uncharted waters. Um, but your, your feedback has been very helpful and I think that shows that, uh, ministerial project can be a successful project. Uh, I heard loud and clear from, uh, most if not all of you, that additional open space is the primary concern that needs to be addressed and I'm confident that RCD and their architect will be able to, uh, address that concern.
Thank you, Charlie.
Uh, pardon me, uh, Chair Guerrero?
There's somebody in the background, go ahead.
Hi, I, sorry, it's Sherry. I see that Navar, Navar is trying to get my attention. I have tried to unmute you, Navar, and I'm not able to, so I'm thinking the muting might be on your side? All right, well, I'm not sure what that is, but...
Okay. Can she shoot you a quick email or something, if she needs to mention something?
Maybe a text?
Yeah, a text, just chairs yourself.
We'll, we'll give Navar just a moment.
Maybe even just give her a call. Good old fashioned phone call.
I'm not sure that I have Navar's number.
Charlie, did you hear her call? Uh, yeah, I could give her a call, I'm not sure, maybe I could tap her through somehow? Let me see. You could just translate the message or question she has.
Yeah.
All right, I'm trying to get my, uh, call her from the cell phone. Okay, let's see, I'm gonna have to hang up on this call then. Wow. I can try it too, wrong.
Navar, there's also, um, I think an option here for Q and A, that might be, um, a, a good way to get the question that you have to Sherry or to whoever you're trying to address.
No, not able to talk, baby is talking. Oh, 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 I see.
We can hear you, Charlie.
Trying to get my call. The heck? Oh, oh. There you go. Um, Navar, uh, has got a new baby in her household and it seems like the baby is interfering with the communication, so I think that's the problem.
Got it.
She doesn't, she doesn't want to unmute because it would be disruptive to the meeting. So I don't know what she wants to, what they want to say, um, but I'm sure we're good. Oh, wait. Baby talking, I can't. Okay.
Got it? Um, okay. Okay, so it doesn't sound as though there's a question from Navar at this point?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thanks for checking, Charlie. Uh, all right, um, so we'll go ahead and continue on to item number eight on agenda, which is planning commissioners' comments. Are there any planning questions that I would like to comment? I see, no, no.
I have no comment.
Okay. All shaking heads, all right. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, adjourn this meeting at 10:15. And these close.